All right, it's 5:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for joining this evening for our special meeting for Tuesday, August 24th of the Louisville City Council, and Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. And so to start off this evening, we'll have a roll call from our city clerk, Meredith Muse. Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton? Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Fahy?
Here.
Thank you, everyone, and so the first item of business today for our special meeting is an executive session. So I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney to introduce the item for us tonight. City Attorney Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. As noted on the meeting agenda, the mayor is requesting an executive session for the consideration of potential real property acquisitions and dispositions only as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy pursuant to Section 5-2(c) of the city's Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024a. Prior to entertaining any motion, the city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
Is the policy of the city to conduct public business in meetings open to the public? While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or make any final decisions. It is the duty of each council member to ensure executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the city council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be described in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. Where federal or state law requires the information being discussed, remain confidential. Certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy, and legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2(c) of the Home Rule Charter authorizes an executive session for the purpose of consideration of real property acquisitions and dispositions by the city, but only as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy for the acquisition or disposition of such property. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 24-6-4024a of the Colorado Revised Statutes. This executive session is specifically concerning a request to purchase real property owned by the city. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session for consideration of real property acquisitions or dispositions.
Thank you. I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of consideration of real property acquisitions and dispositions, and that the executive session include city manager Heather Balzer, deputy city manager Megan Davis, economic vitality director Megan Pierce, and city attorney Kathleen Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, I'm sorry, we're going to do a roll call vote on this motion. City Clerk Muse, could we please have a roll call vote? Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. So we will now, council members will now leave this Zoom session and then log into a Zoom executive session, and then when we conclude, we will come back to the public meeting. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody for your patience. Council is just coming back in the open session from the executive session and as soon as I see everybody here, we will get started back in our regular meeting. All right, and let me make sure all the staff made it back over. It looks like we did. So, thank you, everyone, for your patience. And I will turn it over to our city attorney for our report on our discussion from executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council has noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of consideration of real property acquisitions and dispositions. And in that regard, the council did consider real property acquisitions and dispositions. No follow-up is requested from the city council at this time. And just for the record, City Manager Heather Balzer did not participate in the executive session.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. And so that takes us to our next agenda item this evening, which is Resolution Number 59, Series 2021. A resolution approving a business assistance agreement with Snarfs in Lewisville for economic development project in our city. And so we'll have a staff presentation from our Economic Vitality Director, Megan Pierce. Sorry about that. We're still getting my screens organized. So let me just share my screen with you. All right. So, good evening, everyone. Yes, as the mayor's excitement indicated, we have received an application for business assistance from Snarfs Sandwiches. The business entity name is Snarfs Lewisville LLC. So just a bit of context on this application. Snarfs Sandwiches is considering an expansion of its sandwich shop concept, which was founded in Boulder to our Lewisville community. The business was founded in 1996 by Jimmy Seidel, and they have grown to 24 locations over that time. They are considering leasing space at 1110 East South Boulder Road. The project would occupy 2,400 square feet of commercial space that's been vacant since my nature lab moved to downtown Lewisville on Pine Street. And actually, there has not been a sales tax generating use of this commercial space since 2005. The applicant anticipates doing renovations at the project location and would anticipate having the business open by the end of 2021. The company would employ approximately 20 employees and would have job salaries of about $30,000 per year. Staff finds that the project meets our Business Assistance Program criteria by retaining basic jobs to the city, drawing new customers, and is not expected to draw a large percentage of its customers from existing businesses, creates new sales tax to the city, and utilizes an existing vacant building. The proposed assistance tonight that is for your consideration is a 50% rebate of building permit fees and construction use tax for the tenant finish work that would be capped at $5,000 based on the applicant's estimates. And also a proposed 50% rebate of new sales tax over a five-year period that would be capped at $90,000. The termination clause in the agreement before you includes an April 30th, 2022 date. And the business would need to remain in Lewisville for a period of seven years, or a percentage of rebates would need to be repaid. The total financial impact of this proposed assistance would be rebates of building permit fees and construction use tax totaling just under $4,700, but that would be offset by anticipated revenues of $10,500. And also based on the estimates the applicant provided, the business would be paying $174,000 in sales tax over that five-year period, and we estimate we would rebate $87,000 of that. The total fiscal impact over five years is $91,688. And so, staff recommendation is adopting the resolution to approve the business assistance package with Snarfs Lewisville LLC. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Megan. And so with that, we'll turn over to the members of the public to get any public comments on this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll come back over for council questions, comments, or actions if anybody wants to ask a question or make a motion. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks, Mayor. I would start with proposing that we approve Resolution 59, Series 2021. And so wait for a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I mean, the only piece of the resolution I didn't like was the remaining in Lewisville for seven years. I was hoping we could change that to more like 70. In all seriousness, I used to eat at the original Snarfs on Pearl Street all the time, and Snarfs is one of my favorite sandwich shops. And in my 10 years out of town, it was the first place I would go when I landed. So much so that my mom started just bringing me a Snarfs sandwich to the airport to save time. So I do, I'm a big fan of Snarfs and love it, and I'm happy that they're considering Lewisville. And it's some of the fun, a fun little, little piece of being involved with, with council in this situation, because it is, it's a really cool locally owned and operated and created company and proud to, proud to have them in Lewisville if they, they can now make it here. So that's all. Thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion? I'll just say I, I really hope they choose Lewisville as the location and that when we get back to in-person meetings, that can be one of the places we get dinner from together. That's pretty exciting. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion? Councilmember Fahy?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton? Mayor Stolzmann? Yes. Thank you, everyone. So the motion carries. Our next order of business tonight is Resolution Number 60, Series 2021. A resolution approving a business assistance agreement with Amp Robotics Corporation for an economic development project in the city of Lewisville. Again, Megan Pierce, our Economic Vitality Director is going to take us through this. Thank you, Mayor. So the presentation next here is Amp Robotics Corporation, which is an existing Lewisville business that you may not have heard of, but is doing very exciting things. So Dr. Horowitz is the CEO and founder of Amp Robotics Corporation. They currently have a facility at 1500 Cherry Street, Suite A, in the Colorado Technology Center. And they also have a facility in Broomfield. The company was founded in 2014, and they produce world-leading AI and automation hardware and software that is targeted at the recycling and waste industry. So they're basically making robots that help recycling facilities sort waste and make that a more efficient process. And those robots are really being enabled by what's being built and made here in Lewisville. Their goal would be to consolidate their two existing facilities into a new corporate headquarters and production facility. So because they have facilities in Lewisville and Broomfield, they've been definitely evaluating sites in both locations. But they've identified a site here that they feel best meets their needs. So they're considering 1875 Taylor Street, which is an 83,000-square-foot facility that's currently under development in the Technology Center. They have a massive growth trajectory going on. So wherever they land is, is really going to be part of, of what's next for them. They have 121 employees currently working between Lewisville and Broomfield. As an example, they hired 45 people last quarter. So this is, it's a pretty amazing growth that they're going through. With this project, they anticipate 200 employees by next year and 450 employees by 2026. At which point, they would probably bust the seams of this facility and definitely need another one. The average job salary for Amp Robotics employees is $119,000. So these are very, very professional jobs, high-quality employment. This, since the company desires to develop a headquarters, they will also be making significant tenant improvements since what's being developed there is a, is a build-to-suit. Right now, they're just working on the shell. The staff finds that the project meets our existing program criteria and that it brings high-quality development to Lewisville, brings new jobs to the city with average salaries well above the county's average wage. It represents job diversity and an industry sector that's, that's growing and transforming. And it also brings in value-added result by retaining an existing business that needs capacity to grow. The proposed assistance for your consideration is a 50% rebate of their building permit fees and construction use tax that would be capped at $45,000. We're also recommending a 50% rebate of consumer use tax over a five-year period that would be capped at $85,000. And the project would need to be completed by end of next year, although I anticipate with what they're doing, they would try and get it done way sooner than that. The business would need to remain in Lewisville for a period of seven years or have a percentage of the rebates received paid back. The financial impact to the city from those rebates recommended the permit fees and construction use tax would total $36,210, but would be offset by anticipated revenues of just under $83,000. Also, based on the estimates the applicant provided, they would have purchases of about $6.5 million that would be subject to our consumer use tax. And about 78,000 of that would be rebated. So total impact over five years, $114,210. The action for you tonight is staff's recommendation to adopt a business assistance package with Amp Robotics Corporation. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Director Pierce. Any, so we will take it to public and get any public feedback or comments on Resolution 60, this business assistance package. And you can raise your hand by clicking the raise hand feature at the bottom of your panel, or if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial starting. All right, seeing no public comment, that takes us back over to council for comments and action. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Well, I don't know about proposing 70 years, but you know, this is a, a business assistance package that fits very well with the intent of this program. You know, this is the kind of thing where it does provide some diversity and expansion of a business that is already employing people in Lewisville. So this is very exciting that we have this opportunity, and we hope we can retain them in Lewisville. And so with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 60, Series 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Councilmember Fahy, did you want to speak to the motion?
Well, I was just going to second the motion. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the company and an opportunity for the city to be promoting sustainable businesses or businesses that support, support sustainable projects. And so I'm 100% in support of this proposal.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I agree with both comments. I think, you know, not trying to get in battles with their neighbors, but you know, a company that's straddling Lewisville and Broomfield and trying to figure out where to put its headquarters. I think Mayor Proton said it perfectly that, you know, we, we want to be the place where they want to consolidate and grow and be creating these, these products as, as Councilmember Fahy was saying so. I'm in total support of it. I think it's amazing, awesome, and really important to them.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. And so with that, I'll ask our city clerk for a roll call vote on the motion. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The council approves Resolution Number 60, Series 2021. And our next item of business this evening is Resolution Number 57, Series 2021. A resolution approving a planned unit development to allow construction of a 94,757-square-foot industrial building and a lot consolidation of lots one and two. CTC filing number two to create one lot at 769 CTC Boulevard. This has been continued from the 17th of August, 2021. And I'll ask council members if there are any disclosures. Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to our city staff for a presentation this evening. And it looks like Ellie is going to be giving us, Ellie Hansen Hassan, our city planner, is going to take us through this tonight.
Hi, can everyone see the screen okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Ellie.
All right, sounds good. Good evening, city council members and mayor. My name's Ellie Hassan. I'm planner two at the city of Lewisville. And as mentioned, the item before you is 769 CTC Boulevard, and they are seeking a final plot and planned unit development. And just for your own reference, the public notice certification has been confirmed for this project, and all notices are done per the municipal code. And for a little context, this property is located at the corner of Dillon Road and CTC Boulevard, and it's in the Colorado Technology Center Industrial Park. And the site itself is 7.28 acres and it's owned industrial. The original plot was CTC filing number two, which was approved in 2003. And the original PUD was approved in 2007, extended twice in 2010 and 2013. However, it did expire in 2016. So the applicants are coming forward with a new planned unit development. The site currently has two lots, one of which was on 727 CTC and the other is on 769 CTC. And the applicants are looking to consolidate these two lots into a single lot. The existing easements are to remain, and there are no additional easements or outlots proposed. The applicants are proposing a roughly 95,000-square-foot industrial building, and the building will front onto CTC Boulevard, as seen at the bottom of the site plan, with two access drives. The development provides adequate parking, which, as identified in the IDDSG standards, as well as stormwater retention infrastructure. This property is also immediately west, and immediately west of the property is an agriculturally-zoned property in uncorporated Boulder County. And per the IDDSG, the applicants have included a landscape buffer and lighting mitigation in order to help out with this agriculturally-zoned property. The proposed single-story building will be constructed primarily of tilt-wall concrete with some aluminum frame windows and accent canopies. The building meets architectural design standards, which are outlined in the IDDSG. Staff analysis finds that the application is compliant with the final plot criteria, as well as the PUD criteria in the municipal code sections. The project is also complying with the IDDSG since the planning commission condition, which regards retaining wall fencing. And this has been satisfied as well in this submittal. Based on this information, staff are recommending approval of Resolution 57, Series 2021, which approves a planned unit development and lot consolidation plot for B sites. This concludes staff presentation unless there are any questions.
Sorry about that. I think I was muted. So with that, I'll ask if the applicant had anything they wanted to present this evening.
Hi, this is Blake with Brinkman Constructors. You'll probably see that I look like I'm unmuted, but I'm on my phone and computer, just in case you guys need to see any elevations or renderings to help portray the intent of the building. Also on the call, we have Bryant Mazati with Powers Brown. He's our lead architect. Exeter Group is our developer who has also buildings that they, part of their portfolio, excuse me, is in Lewisville. And among that, they're looking to expand in, in the Colorado market, being Lewisville being one of the first ground-up buildings in Colorado that they'll be doing for the 769 CTC project. I do have a rendering if you guys would like to see it. I don't know if I'm allowed to share a screen or not, but be more than happy to answer any questions. I'm Blake Estes with Brinkman Constructors, senior project manager that's acting on behalf of Exeter Group as a design-build contractor.
Thank you, Blake, and thank you for the presentation. And if council members have questions, we'll get to those in a second. And first, we'll turn over to members of the public and find out if any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item this evening. This is your opportunity. Given that this is a resolution, there's one round of public comment on this agenda item. And our first member of the public to comment is Joshua Cooperman.
Hello?
Hi.
This is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street in Lewisville. I would just like to reiterate a written comment that I sent to the planning commission concerning this development, which didn't seem to gain any traction with the planning track, yeah, with the planning commission. The applicant has asked for a certain number of deferred parking spots. And I would like to ask that city council deny these additional parking spots. Or if the applicant really feels that they are necessary, that then city council asks for some kind of concession in return, perhaps solar awnings over the, an appropriate portion of the parking lot, or perhaps completely tree lining the parking lot so there's much more shade than is currently planned. We do not need more parking spots in town, especially when the purpose of these parking spots is not yet defined, as seems to be the case with these deferred parking spots. We should not be promoting single occupancy vehicle trips, and we should not be promoting more blacktop than we really need. Now, I understand that our current code unfortunately has parking lot minimums. So I don't know if city council can deny these deferred parking So I don't know if city council can deny these deferred parking spots, but if you do have that power, then I certainly hope that city council will take my advice. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public care to comment? All right, seeing none, that takes us back over to council questions and comments and proposed motions. I guess I'll turn to our planner Ellie. Could you tell us a little bit about the parking plan on this?
Sure. Let me see if I can pull it up as well, just to have it for some site context for you guys. So as mentioned in the, in the staff report, the application did have a hundred and ninety parking spots, which were required as a minimum for the IDDSG. The minimums were once, were one space for every, um, well, I definitely will check on it, but it does meet the minimum parking requirements. And then the deferred parking was determined by the applicant to be needed, just in case there are uses that go over the minimum parking ratio. And the space that is in the back by those deferred parking spaces is used for depth of truck turnaround, which is used in this loading dock space that you can see over here. So per our staff review, that's where our initial, we were initially okay with this. It also does meet site coverage. They aren't looking for any waivers or anything. They do meet the minimum twenty five percent landscape coverage that's required.
So just to clarify, Ellie, the, the spaces that are being added are on space that needs to be blacktop for the loading dock?
And their understanding? Yeah, from my understanding, that is correct from what the applicants showing as well.
Okay, thank you. And so they're kind of like a multipurpose thing. If they were using the loading dock, the spaces would need to be empty. But if they're not using the loading dock actively, people could be parked there in other times.
That's correct from my understanding of the site.
Okay, thank you for that clarification for me. Any other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I was wondering if we could ask the applicant for, for some clarification on the parking and, you know, in that turnaround area and what they're trying to accomplish with all that. And what the parking ratio is that they're using.
That'd be great. So Blake, did you want to tell us a little bit about the parking?
Yeah, so the incentive of the parking and Andrew Graybar is with Exeter Group. He is, I think he's online. Could probably join in and give some feedback from the developer side. But as an industrial, the turning radius is great, absolutely needed in order to have the truck trailer parking turning radius to come out of the parking stalls in the truck court. Apologize, I'm mapping it out on my screen, which obviously you guys can't see. But then the future parking is obviously the flexibility to differentiate and show to potential tenants that there is additional parking if a tenant comes in and wants to move to Louisville, but their, their their operations require additional parking, that we do have this flexibility for a spec warehouse.
Yeah, Blake, can you hear me? This is John DeVal with Exeter. Andrew's not on tonight.
Yeah, so John, just so you know, it looks like Andrew is on. I don't know. And if you guys could just wait till I call on folks, if you don't mind raising your hand, then we can.
Okay, I was just gonna answer that question.
Okay, great. Take it away, John.
Okay, thank you. So I oversee Exeter's office in Colorado and Arizona. And as Blake mentioned earlier, you know, we own a couple other buildings in the CTC. In fact, Amp Robotics, who, you know, we were, we're all just talking about a few minutes ago is one of our tenants in fifteen hundred Cherry, and so Studio Shed and Cooper T. So this will be our third building in the park, which we're excited about. So to answer your question a little bit more specifically, flexibility on parking, you know, again, we're, as Ellie said, we're just meeting the code there. And that kind of showing that in the future on that truck court area is really important because, you know, as you drive around in the tech center, there's a wide variety of different types of users and tenants in the park. So that kind of flexibility to meet the demand, there's virtually no space left in the park right now to attract businesses to Louisville and to that park, that kind of flexibility for someone who may have a heavier car park versus not needing all of that trailer court truck space for truck maneuverability is kind of key to flexibility for us to attract different users and businesses to this building. So that kind of flexibility is fairly important in terms of you know, tenants like we have in our buildings now, helping them grow or attracting new tenants to the park.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, so I still like to get my question answered about the parking ratios that you're proposing. It's two per thousand, I believe. The one per five hundred? Two per, two per thousand square feet. So. One per five hundred square feet, okay. And Steph, what is, what are, what are our industrial guidelines called for?
I'm sorry, I had my hand raised. The industrial guidelines, the minimum is that, I apologize for blanking on earlier, the minimum is two spaces per thousand square feet. And the ratio does go up depending on what the use is. So for office space, for instance, it does require four spaces per thousand and showroom space and requires four and a half spaces per thousand, which are above that minimum requirement.
Yeah, okay. And then one last question of the applicant. If you're going to use it, if you're going to use these, this extra pavement for, you know, turnaround space for the trucks, but you might need them for occupants of the building. How do you accomplish both?
Blake?
Well, go ahead, Blake.
Oh, sorry, or John, I didn't, sorry, I just, I thought, I see Blake on the screens.
Right. So obviously there, every trucking, so that's going to be the largest trucks, which is your sixty foot trailers. And then we also have the opportunity, if they have a small van, van oper, operation, it's mostly have the flexibility of using parking. And then this is kind of divvied up to have four potential tenants to work in this facility. So a portion of this would be designated or could work for either, either type of tenant. And I'm more than happy to have Andrew or John elaborate on that.
Yeah, I think it's not necessarily mutually exclusive, right? Like they're, one of the tenants, a couple of the tenants could be, you know, more of a heavy trucker type, you know, who needs maneuverability on one end of the building and anybody, as Ellie said, there's a lot of different types of users in the park that skewed more towards office or showroom type space that need even more. So this is kind of our way of trying to, you know, not straddle the fence, but be able to attract as wide a net of type of users as possible. If we end up having someone on one end of the building who is a heavier parker, has more of a showroom space, as you see, as you drive through the park again, and being repetitive, but you see a lot of those, you know. So that's just our way of trying to accomplish both. And yes, truck and car traffic, you know, are not always mixed very well. So it just depends on the mix of tenants that we get in terms of how we end up maneuvering it. So it just kind of comes back to having as much flexibility as possible. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. Councilmember Fahy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a question following up on what Joshua had asked. Is impossible to put in a line of trees that would shade that area of the parking so that the blacktop doesn't absorb quite so much heat? And also provide electric car charging spaces and perhaps have the solar covers for the parking spaces?
Ellie, do you want to bring up the landscaping plan for us and then, you know, show us, kind of take us through what Councilmember Fahy is asking about?
Sure. So per the IDDSG, per area of parking, I believe it's sixteen spaces. We do require landscape islands, which do help shade the site a little bit. It's, the site does meet those landscape requirements. And then on the side that is looking at the truck docket, the landscape plan slightly oriented different than the site plan. But you can see that they are proposing a pretty significant landscape buffer on this side. And that also is in part to help with the uncorporated neighbor there, but it could also help provide shade to these deferred parking spaces as well. And alongside the spaces themselves, they also will have the landscape islands built out if they do decide to build the parking with a future building permit.
Thanks, Ellie. And then just turning it over to the applicant, did you want to make any comments in response to Councilmember Fahy's questions? Nothing particular? All right, thank you. Councilmember Fahy, do you have any follow up?
No, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Comments, motions? Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Ellie, thank you for the staff report. It's very well done. I'd also like to acknowledge the planning commission. They dig pretty deep when they go through these things. In fact, the condition that they raised about the landscaping is something I very much appreciate. So I, I think this is the intended use. It certainly fits with the comp plan. And it looks like you're working with, you know, potential tenants. So this is something that I very much support. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number fifty seven, series twenty twenty one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. Is there a second? Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion from anyone? I'm not seeing it. Oh, there's Councilmember Lay. I'll just add in my comments. I feel that it meets the IDDSG, and I really do agree and echo the comments of Mayor Protem Maloney that the planning commission did a nice job working through some of the issues and making some requirements there. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think the proposal meets all of the criteria that are required for passage. And I think it's a good project, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it on behalf of both the applicant and the planning commission and staff. So thanks. I'm going to support it.
Thank you. And so with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask city clerk Muth for a roll call vote. Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to resolution, the motion carries, resolution fifty seven passes. Thank you, Blake, and to the rest of the team. That takes us to our next item of business tonight, which is resolution fifty eight, series twenty twenty one, a resolution approving a planned unit development to allow for a mural on an industrial zone property located at fifteen oh one Empire Road. This has been continued from August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. And I'll open the public hearing and ask if there are any disclosures. And I'll just state for the record that the city owns the building. So we're all equally, everyone who lives in the community is equally invested in this property. Any other disclosures? Seeing none, I'll turn it over, it looks like, to Kim Bauer on our planning department to take us through this application. Good evening, Kim.
Good evening. Can you see my screen or the PowerPoint okay?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you.
Excellent. Sorry, I started a little early there. But good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council. I'm Kim Bauer, the historic preservation planner. I have before you this evening a request for a planned unit development for Abidford Venture at fifteen oh one Empire Road. And for confirmation of notice, this item was properly noticed per our municipal code. In the image before you, the subject property is located within the yellow dashed outline along Empire Road. For a little more context, Courtesy Road or Highway forty two is just out of frame of the aerial image located to the west of the outlined subject property. The PUD proposal before you this evening is requesting the approval to allow for a mural on an industrial zoned property. For some background, in the fall of twenty twenty, as a response to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, the city of Louisville offered matching grants through a recovery and improvement program, and Abidford Venture received matching funds in part for new signage. The existing sign, which includes advertising for their particular business, was installed without a sign permit application. And you can see that existing sign in the image before you on your screen. When staff informed the applicant that murals are not allowed and that the sign exceeded size limits, the applicant requested to approve, requested approval to keep a mural in, in that place instead, and to apply for a separate wall sign that does meet code. Staff would like to note that as included in the staff report in the packet, this request does meet all four waiver criteria as listed before you on the screen. The proposed mural would redesign and reface the existing sign to remove any advertising language and commercial speech, and instead only include the artistic renderings of people enjoying the outdoors. In doing so, the proposed mural would meet the definition of mural as laid forth in the sign code. The mural would be approximately five hundred and forty square feet in size and sit on the southern elevation of the building as indicated with the arrow shown on the screen. While the current sign code only contemplates for murals to be allowed in commercial, mixed use and downtown zones, staff would like to note that during the development of the current sign code, standards for industrial properties were primarily crafted with consideration of the Colorado Technology Center as context. This slide shows you the proposed mural as it would look with no commercial language at the top of the screen there. On the lower half of the slide, you will see a detailed look showing the design of the proposed wall sign on the left, and then what that sign would look like in its proposed location on the right. The picture before you now, it just shows you the full facade of the, of the existing sign that would be replaced. And then the proposed new wall sign added below, just for context of what it would look like on site. With that, staff recommends approval of resolution fifty eight, series twenty twenty one, and I am here for any questions.
Thank you, Kim. Is there any comment from the applicant this evening?
Hi, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. This is Paul Dreher. I'm the CEO with Abidford Venture. Very little comment. I know you have a full agenda already. I just wanted to share some gratitude for the planning commission, for Kim and Megan and the rest of the staff that I feel like Kim has done a great job of laying out our proposal and application, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Paul. And so that takes us over to members of the public on this one. Again, it's a resolution, so this will be your opportunity to comment on this agenda item. If you have something you'd like to tell us, please raise your hand and let us know. Seeing no comments, any council member, questions, comments, motions this evening? Mayor Protem Maloney?
You saw my hand. Thank you. Well, I think this is a simple one. This is going through our, our staff processes. I think, Kim, thank you very much for the presentation and the other, other staff members that worked on this and working with Paul. And once again, the planning commission had a thorough discussion on that. And that's one of the reasons why we had that. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number fifty eight, series twenty twenty one. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion of the motion? All right, I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask our city clerk for a roll call vote on the motion. Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. Thank you, Paul. And that takes us to our next agenda item this evening, which is discussion direction on affordable housing options. And so we're going to turn it over, I believe, to our planning director, Rob Sakara, for a discussion on affordable housing.
Thanks, Mayor. I think Deputy City Manager Megan Davis wanted to do an introduction and then turn it over to Lisa.
Perfect. That sounds fantastic. Thank you so much. I know everybody on the team's been working really hard on this, so I wasn't exactly sure who to hand it off to. And so I'll turn it over to our interim city manager, Davis.
No problem. It's definitely been a, it's been a team effort. But I just wanted to comment that, you know, in twenty twenty one, as a part of your work planning process, you included two items related to affordable housing. The first was inclusionary zoning and a desire for staff to bring forward an inclusionary zoning ordinance. And June fifteenth, council adopted ordinance eighteen oh nine, series twenty twenty one. The council work plan also included kind of a part B to the affordable housing discussion, and that was a request to explore additional tools and options around supporting affordable housing in the city of Louisville. So we are bringing forward this evening some options and tools for discussion and consideration, looking for further direction. And also just wanted to comment that, as requested during the inclusionary zoning discussion, some of these tools are complementary to the ordinance that was passed at that time. So Lisa, Planner Ritchie is going to go through all the details and then we look forward to the discussion.
Thank you. So give me one moment here. I'm going to pull up my presentation for you. All right, can you all see the screen okay?
We can. Can we get, oh, there we go. Perfect.
Okay, sure. So yeah, Megan gave a great introduction. I'm going to kind of dive right in here. So this is a a big topic. We're going to touch on a lot of issues, and really, we want to just kind of get some feedback from you on additional work that we should be doing. And so as you know, in twenty eighteen, the city endorsed the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnership Strategy with a citywide goal of twelve percent permanently affordable, matching the overall countywide goal, and this could be permanently affordable, matching the overall countywide goal, and this could be met through a mix of new housing as well as preserving and acquiring existing housing stock. And then, as mentioned, Phase 1 of this work plan item resulted in adoption of an ordinance on June 15th. And essentially, that requires a minimum of 12% of all new housing be deed restricted. There are options for that. So one is a fee-in lieu option. They could build onsite or acquire offsite. They could dedicate land in lieu of providing inclusionary requirements or enter into alternative agreements that provide equivalent affordable housing for the city. So for a little bit of background, you all know this, but we'll go through this again a little bit. Just generally, housing prices within Boulder County and Louisville specifically have been rising for quite some time now. The graph above shows the trajectory for Louisville, which is in yellow since about 2005. And following this, the median house price is now roughly $826,000 for a single-family home, and that's 25% higher than the 2018 median of $660,000. So this problem is not, it doesn't seem to be going away and just continuing to escalate. So when we look at qualifications for affordable housing, these numbers are set through HUD, they're set on a countywide level, and so the city of Louisville would will continue to study this issue, but generally, we would follow these these income qualifications. And so really, AMI, which is area median income, is the standard for which we compare, and then from a from a structure, communities typically then set different targets and different subsidies and provisions for housing based on that AMI level. So you say you're 30% AMI, those are your extremely low incomes, so their income is basically 30% of your typical median income, and then that rises up through up to 100. And so really, affordable housing programs typically target kind of that 30% through 80% AMI. Renter programs tend to be on the lower percent, and for sale for ownership product typically gets more as you get closer to 60 to 80. And as a reminder, the median sales for single-family in Louisville was $826,000. When we did our fee study for the inclusionary ordinance, just as a reminder, the Louisville fee studies demonstrate that the maximum affordable price for a three-person household at 80% AMI is $414,000. And if you're down at that 60% AMI, it's $316,000. So there is a large gap for what is considered affordable under that formula and our median single-family home price. So that really demonstrates the need here and how far apart we are. We can go through these if you'd like, but really, this slide in here is just to represent the policies we have currently in our comprehensive plan about supporting affordable housing, diversity of housing, things like this. And then just a little bit more background, you know, on the goal. So within Louisville itself, if we are to try and hit this 12% goal, this is based on 2019 census. We had roughly 8,600 units. 12% of that would mean we'd need roughly 1,000 units currently existing that are deed-restricted affordable. We have 273, which represents 3.1%, so we have a gap of 769 units. When we look at our current zoning and, you know, kind of determine how that plays forward with possible development, we think that roughly totals about 383 units. 12% of that is 46. So even if we develop all the property that's currently zoned residential, 12% of that goes affordable, we still have a delta, a gap of roughly 730 units. So because of that, we need to talk about additional tools and options if we want to make progress on this 12% goal. So you all know this, but I'll go this, go through this real briefly. We have a lot of factors. So this is not one, there's no one solution, and there's no one cause that really have gotten us to where we are. So the kind of primary factors that are influencing affordability right now, in particular, we have low inventory for sale. So we certainly have high demand. We have low inventory. That alone is driving things up generally over the last, you know, in Boulder County, and this is really a nationwide, a lot of what we're seeing in Louisville is replicated nationwide, but particularly here, we do have a lack of new supply, particularly when you couple that with the jobs that we're adding, you know, really on a monthly basis, and you all saw this through the back presentation earlier, you know, where we are approving and constructing new employment opportunities here in Louisville on a really regular basis, but the housing demand is certainly not keeping up. So from a Boulder County perspective, this 3.5 jobs for each new housing unit, that's countywide, but we didn't, we don't have the data for Louisville. We can bring that to you, but we don't have any reason to believe that that's going to be substantially different, given the development we've seen. Plus, too, you know, there's greater understanding that just because housing is cheaper, maybe farther out, their transportation costs at a household level is higher, right? So you maybe have heard this term drive to qualify, and so we certainly see that. Folks are driving, you know, they're buying homes out in Firestone, Thornton, Erie, and working in Louisville. And so from a household perspective, that's a definite impact, particularly on lower-income families, and so that transportation housing cost nexus, we recognize that that's also impacting affordability. So to look further at a lot of these issues and really dive in Louisville at a local level, some communities undergo a housing study. And so really, that's something we can talk about. You know, staff, I think, could perform some of these analyses on a high level, but if council really wants to understand, you know, a deeper dive on the economics, a deeper dive on the housing needs, the effectiveness of incentives, the required revenues, the impact to developers in the city, and as well as more broadly to understand community support for some of these things we're going to talk about, a housing study is something that, you know, a fair number of communities do as they're developing these programs. So I know we talk a lot about, you know, kind of housing locally when we're talking about projects, specific projects that are coming in, but just more broadly, when we think about how additional housing could benefit Louisville, we do see that recent increases in online sales tax capture improves fiscal balance for residential development that maybe we weren't seeing five years ago. And so we are, through state and federal laws, being able to capture more of those online sales tax. So residents, obviously, in Louisville can bring those sales tax revenues to us. From a sustainability perspective, providing additional housing to meet that jobs need can result in a few sectors. And again, these are generalized statements. I do want to say these are general statements. If we want to see more specifically how these could translate into improvements for Louisville, we'd need to do more of a housing study. But generally, the transportation sector is the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, so providing housing near jobs can reduce BMT. There is a reduction in energy consumption when you compare, say, an attached dwelling and smaller housing than traditional single-family dwellings. And that generally, again, this is a general statement, I don't know that, you know, how it would break down for Louisville, but cities with higher densities have lower carbon footprints per capita. Again, they probably have smaller housing units. They have more public transit due to density. People are walking more and biking more, just given the proximity to work, school, and shopping, things like that. Additionally, when we look at other city goals, as you know, the EDI Task Force has included housing as one of their recommended areas for further study to continue to meet some of the diversity inclusion goals that we have. And I have, we haven't had time to dig into this to a great degree, but we did receive really preliminary census data last week. It didn't make the packet. But generally, our 2020 census data that shows while Louisville over the last 10 years did see a 15.5% overall population increase, we saw a 6.2% decrease in population under 17, as well as an increase in minority populations. And so what we're seeing, we haven't really had time to parse this data or really study it, but that generally, we're seeing an aging population in smaller households, potentially a need for diverse housing types, so less, less single-family, which could, you know, some of these tools could help provide. I also just want to note that, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, I think the typical picture is, you know, mid-moderate density, higher-density housing, but one of the tools we could have is, you know, acquisition of single-family or construction of single-family. So I think some of these tools are going to talk more about alternative housing types, but we don't want to forget that we do have families, that a single-family home would be beneficial to meet the inclusionary and affordability goals. And so, you know, Steph really felt that if we were going to talk about this topic and things that we could do within an inclusionary zoning ordinance, which we're going to get to, we thought we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about how to provide just additional housing, which can help meet the housing crisis, help bring more supply to the market, which potentially can decrease, you know, the escalation of cross, of costs, as well as meet some of those naturally affordable goals. So not every affordable unit needs to be deed restricted, sometimes just through the design of homes and things like that, you can have them be more attainable and affordable. So a little bit of background on why we're presenting these other options. And so a couple of things we could do for zoning for additional housing supply, one of them is what we call an accessory dwelling unit or an ADU. It's a secondary unit on the same lot as a single-family unit. Currently, these are not allowed in any zone district in Louisville. Regulations around these typically include a requirement for owner occupancy, size limitations, parking, architectural compatibility. And as far as comparison, pretty much all of our neighboring jurisdictions allow these in some of their zone districts. I didn't do a comparison for all, you know, which zone districts, but Superior, Lafayette, Boulder, Roomfield, Boulder County, and Golden all permit these in some of their zone districts. And this could be a way to provide some of those additional alternative housing types. So another concept is, you know, while this is called elimination of single-family zoning, and I think from a, you might commonly hear this term, it doesn't actually eliminate single-family as a use by right. And so what some of these communities are doing, including the, you know, basically the entire state of Oregon for communities of a certain size, of which Louisville would be in that 20,000, would qualify for a portion of this program, cities like Sacramento, Raleigh, North Carolina, Minneapolis, and many others are kind of signing on to these programs where basically, in addition to single-family as a use by right in their single-family zone districts, they're allowing duplexes, triplexes, or other small-scale multifamily structures. And really, the, a common term for this is called kind of the missing middle housing. And so when you look at the graphic on the bottom, you know, I look at that, and I think, you know, I don't know that we're going to be all the way over here for something that would be within the scale of Louisville, but I think, you know, you could look at something like the duplex, fourplex, maybe up to this townhouse density, you know, within our single-family neighborhoods. And certainly, there's a lot of conversations that would be had around this, but these different alternative housing types don't add significant density to neighborhoods and are a way to meet meet additional housing supply. When we look at Louisville specifically, some of the barriers that staff identify or staff hears about when we have conversations with people interested in adding more housing in Louisville, one of the things we could do is revise or remove the special review use approval in some areas of the city, could identify additional locations for more density. So through that, we could look at kind of our dwelling unit per acre cap in the zone districts, as well as identify additional locations to add residential uses through, you know, that SRU or just rezoning. Generally, I think staff assumes that this would be a good conversation for the comprehensive plan process. However, you know, we do note that this crisis is happening now, and our comprehensive plan, you know, isn't really slated to kick off until 2022, and that will probably take a year, and, you know, so we'd be years out, I think, if we want to rely on the comprehensive plan process to see any result for policy change. So just want to note from a timing perspective there. So now, when we dig more into what we could include in Phase 2 of our inclusionary housing ordinance, we look at incentives. And so City Council, you asked us to, you know, what are some incentives that can result in additional affordable deed-restricted housing within development? The most common incentive that we see in most municipalities that do have this program is a density bonus. This is typically coupled with a design waiver. And so really, this is, allows an increase to density, dwelling units per acre through height or floor area ratio increases, could allow reduction in minimum landscape area. So say you have, you know, a lot of our zone districts have a 30% landscape requirement, maybe we drop that down to 15 in exchange for additional density. Typically, these programs result in 10% to 20% more affordable units, but we'd really have to study this for Louisville specifically, and we really would like your feedback on, you know, which types of those standards you feel like are some room for give here. Generally, this graphic shows kind of how it could work. I mean, this isn't something that would be really allowed in Louisville currently. This would be a four-story building. You know, 12% is our requirement. And so if you say you wanted to get to 20%, you know, some communities then would be adding an additional story of height in order for the developer to still maintain a profit to provide additional affordable housing. So this is just one example of how a density bonus could work. So additional incentives for affordable housing, a lot of programs evaluate fee waivers or fee reductions. This could include plan review fees, building permit fees, land use application fees. Some communities go so far as water fees, tap fees, sewer fees, things like that. Another incentive could be expedited processing, and so as you know, our land use review process takes months. Our typical processing time runs anywhere from five to six months, you know, maybe to a year or 18 months, depending on how many layers of approval they need, and so whether it needs a GDP amendment, a preliminary PUD, a final PUD, what have you. Some communities are finding success in incentivizing additional affordable housing. If developers provide additional, they can get on an expedited track. You know, Steph notes with our, with our current staffing level, that would be difficult to achieve expedited processing if you're looking at kind of a full site plan. So if we're looking at drainage and utilities and things like that, Steph would have, it would be challenging to speed that up. However, I think if we are talking about applications for GDP amendments or where we already know we have policy support on the books, I think policy support, if developers have assurance that certain types of projects, that there is policy support for rezoning, approval of SRU, waivers for density design standards, things like that, that alone, I think, would be a good incentive for developers. What we hear is a lot of reluctance for projects that would need a rezoning because it's challenging, given our current requirements for a high level of investment for upfront costs without some degree of certainty. And so I think where we can have a dialogue around policy support could be a way to achieve an incentive. Finally, one of the tools that the inclusionary housing ordinance could look at is generation of additional revenues in order to support construction of or acquisition of or maintenance of affordable housing development. One tool that some communities rely on are what we call linkage fees, and those can be on both commercial or residential properties. And so essentially, for any new build or whatever trigger, you know, we'd like to look at, maybe it's a substantial remodel, things like that. Or if, you know, it's resulting in additional jobs, there would be a linkage fee that would provide housing that would be associated with the new jobs for commercial development. And then for the residential side, some communities do a linkage fee for even just new market rate housing on the assumption that they are increasing service demand, which brings in potentially lower-wage jobs or the demand for lower-wage jobs within the city. And I just want to note from this demand side, you know, a lot of communities are seeing that right now, in particular, the staffing shortages that we see all throughout town, you know, we know of a number of restaurants that aren't open seven days a week anymore just because of staffing shortages and things like that, and some of that cause is certainly tied to affordable or lack of affordable and accessible housing for some of our lower-paid workers within the city. So additionally, we could look at new fees, taxes, or partnerships to generate additional revenue. I'm not going to go through all of these. You all know the limits of labor and kind of what some of these would take, where, you know, what a tax needs, what a fee needs, but happy to talk more about these if we want to, when we go through their dialogue. So really, that's all I have for a presentation. I have a number of questions for you. What's on the slide? Mirrors? What's in the staff report? I'm happy to answer any questions you may have before we dig into your discussion.
Thanks. Thank you for that presentation, Lisa, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions and discussion. I can think back to when we used to get to be in person and that we would all be in the library and being able to see each other's body language and ask all kinds of questions. And so I envy that, hey, we'll get to be back in person, and I think this would make a great topic for that setting, but. Would you like me to turn my screen off for a while so you all can see, or do you want me to leave the screen? Oh, yeah, yeah, that's just fine. Yeah, that would be, that's just fine. I think there'll be a lot of different topics and a lot of different directions. But before we get to the council discussion, we'd like to take public comment on this agenda item and find out what the public would like to tell us. And so if any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time, and you'll find the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Or if you've dialed it by phone, you can dial star nine. So first up, we have Ann Marie Jensen. And sorry, just as a reminder, And sorry, just as a reminder, um if everybody could tell us their name and their address, and then tell us what you'd like to tell us, and you'll each have about three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, thanks. I'm Anne Marie Jensen. I'm with the East County Housing Opportunity Coalition, and we have a lot of members in Lewisville. And tonight, the staff did a great job of presenting to you a list of tools to help you achieve your affordable housing goal of 12% by 2035. And you've adopted an inclusionary housing ordinance, and we know that that will not be enough to achieve that goal. But I ask you, as you are thinking about these tools, to take a step back and think about what are your values. In the last week, the UN issued a report saying that damage to people and livelihoods caused by climate change is happening at a scale that people on the front lines cannot manage. Time is running out for millions in some of the poorest countries in the world. And as you and we, the residents of the small towns in Boulder County, ponder the future of affordable housing, we know that whenever you try to address affordable housing, you will be met with opposition. But ask yourself again, what do we really value? Do our actions match our values? If we care about the planet and our local contribution to greenhouse gases, as your staff reported, densely populated cities have smaller carbon footprints than sprawling suburbs. Low density developments produce nearly four times the greenhouse gases of higher density developments. And single family homes use about twice as much energy as multifamily homes. And of course, then there's the walkability of a community and the VMT reductions. Does Lewisville, a community where the people who work here, it is Lewisville, a community where the people who work here can live here? Even the barista, whose income is only 35,000 a year. Do you value and want that person to live here? Do we want our children to have a hope of being able to live here and buy a home in the town they grew up in? Or like hundreds of young professionals I have spoken to, are they planning an exit to somewhere more affordable, leaving Lewisville to be an enclave of people over 50, lacking the vibrancy and energy of young people, people of color, immigrants, and refugee refugees? Think about what you value, then think about what it would take to get there. And it will likely be many or all of these tools. We are sorely in need, though, of entry level for sale housing and lower end rentals. The 60 to 80% that is often being done just isn't cutting it. I recommend you use some of your ARPA funds, um your incentives and regulatory reform. Um you may need a housing staff person if you're going to try and actually do all of this. But nothing you do could be more important, and we are here to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Debbie Haysman.
Hello. Um yes, I'm Debbie Haysman, and I live here in Lewisville at 247 South Lark Avenue. And um, I just was thinking about why I wanted to be here tonight to speak to you, and I realized it's because I am lucky. I'm lucky because 30 years ago, I was able to buy a home here when the home prices were more accessible to young people just starting out in their careers. I don't want Lewisville to be a place where only the lucky or the privileged can live. I am a retired teacher from the Boulder Valley School District, and I often hear from new teachers that they just can't afford to live here, and that is not right. Our teachers in our school district should be able to live, afford to live in a place where they are teaching our children and making positive contributions to our community. There are so many creative ideas for making housing affordable for all people. Um for the young person just starting out, for the senior citizen on a fixed income, for the single parent. And this is what makes a community strong. People who live in the community where they work, where they have a connection and and they have family, where they go to church, where they spend their time. This is what makes a community strong because they care about their home and their neighborhood. And I've heard uh tonight, this was a wonderful presentation. I'm so glad I got to hear it. Um I've also heard of cities that partner with churches where the church can donate land to affordable housing. And um there's partnerships with developers, and I know there are many developers who believe in making communities strong and make wonderful contributions to the affordable housing efforts. And as was mentioned, zoning changes, reuse of existing structures I've heard communities doing, and all the incentives that were mentioned tonight. So I ask you to continue investigating all these amazing possibilities to provide affordable housing. There are many, and it is the right thing to do, and yes, we are needing it right now. Um you, Lewisville is a beautiful, strong, vibrant community, and I deeply believe that we can only get stronger and more beautiful when people of diverse income levels, ages, and life circumstances are able to live here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Joshua Cooperman. You might be muted on your end. There you go.
Hello?
Hi.
This is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. Uh I am very supportive of the city doing more to promote affordable housing. Uh tonight, I would like to advocate for one of the options suggested by the city staff, namely rezoning. I think that this option has the most potential for the development of affordable housing in Lewisville. And I think it also has the potential for making Lewisville more sustainable. Uh this morning, when I was about to go out for my break bike ride, I didn't really have an idea where to go. Uh so instead of riding into the hills, I thought, I'll go around town and uh look at some of the areas I don't necessarily look at all the time. And it seems to me there are a lot of places where if we rezoned, we could build a lot of housing, uh a good portion of which could be affordable. Uh in particular, in the Centennial Valley, where there's a little bit of housing, there seem to be plenty of lots that could be rezoned for residential. Uh and the same goes, for instance, for the shopping center at Dylan and McCaslin uh over by the Home Depot and the movie theater and the bus station. Uh and need I say, the Phillips 66 Special Rural District. And of course, there are other places where there are lots of empty lots and empty parking lots, which could be rezoned and would then allow for uh development of residential properties. As a few of the previous, uh or as one of the previous speakers uh talked about, and as the, as uh Lisa Ritchie talked about as well, right? Building more densely um generally is good for sustainability, right? If we could rezone some of these areas that I mentioned, people might be able to actually walk or bike to their jobs at these places, or they could better walk or bike to the businesses that are near those places. Uh for instance, many of these places are along the McCaslin corridor. And I could imagine that, you know, uh a real transformation of the McCaslin corridor that would promote sustainability, that would make it very much more walkable and bikeable than it currently is. And I think a lot of people in town would like that if they could more easily cross or go over or under McCaslin uh and get to those businesses. Uh seems like most people just drive to that. And uh lastly, I'd just like to say that um I'm also interested in the city pursuing policies that would help to redress historic and continuing systemic racism in housing opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ken Wilson.
Ken Wilson, 261 Short Place, Lewisville. Uh I'm uh proud and grateful uh that our city council is discussing this issue. And uh I really appreciate the staff analysis and the fact that they've actually proposed or uh identified some tools that could help us address these interrelated issues of the diversity of our community, of sustainability, of the availability of workers for our businesses. Uh I hope that you will carefully consider each of the tools that the staff have identified. And uh I know it's going to take a lot of in-depth analysis. It's not something simple, but it's something we really need to do. And I hope that uh the employees of of Snarf and the engineers who work for the robotics company can all live in our community. Uh it's important for us to have that uh opportunity for the people who work here to live here and for us to have a diverse community. Thank you.
Thank you. And so that takes us through a public comment on this agenda item, and we'll come back over to council questions and comments and then try to um come up with a path forward for next steps and how we want to move forward. And so first in the queue, we have Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Uh, Plater Ritchie, I have a question for you about the housing study that you're talking about. Can you provide a little bit more information about um kind of the the information that we would get out of seeking, out of looking at a housing study?
Sure. So I think the information you would get can be tailored toward ever, kind of whatever information you feel like you need as a starter. So, you know, we can kind of set the scope through that um through a further discussion. But generally, the types of information that housing studies look at are more localized data. So what is the demographics now? What are our demographic trajectories? What is our existing housing stock mix now? Where do we have shortfalls? Where do we have needs? So really, kind of a more in-depth analysis of Lewisville's needs, existing and projected into the future. Um additionally, we could, um a lot of housing studies include economic analysis. So an evaluation, if we offer different, say, fee incentives, um how would that play out from an economic impact to the city? And conversely, how many more affordable units could that type of incentive provide, right? So how much is that economic incentive actually beneficial to a developer? And how much is that going to cost the city? Um so things like that, we could also um, from an incentive type too, you know, you look at like the density bonuses. So an evaluation of what is our existing, you know, what is our existing zoning? Where are our limitations? So generally, we have a three-story high limit within the city. You know, if you go up to four stories, how many more units could that provide? Things like that. So really, you are kind of, it would bring in specialized consultant teams um who have more expertise, particularly in the economic analysis. I think, you know, um staff could look at some more of the zoning changes, but I think the economic side staff would certainly need help and support on some of those deeper dive evaluations. But it also really can be tailored toward kind of whatever question you're trying to answer as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um the other, the other question that I, I guess I would have is really around. So you said that the comprehensive plan process is in 20, starts in 2022.
Yep.
And while, you know, that that would be a logical place to do some of this work, it might, might also be um something that might take a little, a long time.
Yeah.
I'm sensitive to some of the timeframe here because of the, um I I look at some of the mountain communities in particular, um like Summit County or
Yep.
Pittkin County, um where they're, you know, they're having real affordable housing crises, right? They don't have workers to to work in their local businesses, and there are people, um and there just aren't units for folks to live in. And I, and I'm mindful of the the fact that, you know, our community relies upon um workers. And it is, you know, I think one of the, I appreciate Anne Marie Jensen's comments about sort of what are our values. Um and, you know, it is certainly uh my values that I would want people who work in our community to be, to be able to live in our community for all kinds of reasons. Um sustainability, um equity, um and a number of others. So uh I think, I think understanding, but I also am mindful of the idea that, um you know, I don't, I I I noticed that in the, in the staff memo, there was a line about sort of supply being related to price. And I think from an economic, pure economic perspective, that makes sense. If you control the entire supply, which we don't.
Certainly, it's just one factor. Absolutely. And then the city is only one portion of that component.
Right, exactly. And so like, you know, Boulder County is a housing market. We are but a slice. And so I think it is, I think it is important for us to think about, like, I look at the new units that they're putting in in Superior. You know, has those news, have those new, new units in Superior really driven down the prices of houses in our area because of this increased supply? I would probably argue no. So I I think the, I think it's important for us to understand the economics of how increased supply would affect um housing prices and how we need to have appropriate regulations so that if if there is additional residential units that are put into place, what, you know, what what are we getting out of that? Like, how? And that's where I think our inclusive, our inclusion, inclusionary zoning ordinance uh comes into place. Um I would also, I think, I think, so that's, so that's one part. I also want to understand sort of, as we think about the residential component, the balance between residential and commercial and our sort of city finances. Because it is, um it is not clear to me that through property taxes and otherwise, um that, you know, putting in more residential um doesn't put um an increased strain on our um city resources. So we would need to find ways to to think about that. And I I wonder if those kinds of questions, is a very rambling answer, but rambling question, but I wonder if those types of questions would be things that could be handled in a housing study.
Absolutely. That's my understanding. I mean, having never, you know, we haven't done one here in Lewisville. But yeah, I think generally that is my understanding. Those are the types of things we would look at. As well as, you know, when you see kind of those, you know, agreed, what is the cost to the city overall for more residential units through zoning or through affordable? But on the flip side, what type of economic development could result from additional housing as well, right? So I think it's both sides of that coin um too. So additional costs or additional revenues, or where does that fiscal out? And then, and then when you bring it back to your values question, you know, in, even if there is a cost associated with it to the city, is that a value that the city wants to fund? And so, yeah, those are the types of questions that could be deeper, you know, deeper dive through that housing study.
Thank you. Um can I, can I also ask a question? Uh it seems like there, are there things, uh Plater Ritchie, and then I'll, and then I'll let my fellow counselors talk. I apologize for for monopolizing the conversation. Um that that could be potentially proposed in the short term, even while we're doing a a long-term housing study. Is that something staff could come back with, you know, like short-term items?
Absolutely. Um I think we would want to hear from you as far as kind of what type of items you would want to look at, as well as what type of um public input process you would want to have to accompany that. So whether it be, you know, maybe targeted amendments to maybe our small area plans. So, you know, for example, Mr. Cooperman was talking about, you know, additional residential development out um in the McCaslin corridor in Centennial Valley, but it's Centennial Valley, right? So maybe it's a targeted small amendment to, or targeted amendment to the small area plan to evaluate, you know, additional residential development in that small area plan, right? So you could, I think, kind of carve that out. But really, that's, I think, some of the questions we would want to ask, you know, we want to hear from you on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and thank you so much, Lisa, for all this information. It's been a wonderful presentation, has raised a lot of issues and a lot of questions.
A big, big topic. And and just, if we could just wait till I call on folks, just because there's a lot, like council members literally can only talk to each other at council meetings, and so we don't have an opportunity. And so if if I could just get Councilmember Fahey to go right now.
Okay. So I would have a couple of things. So first, um I think the the issue for housing is one of equity. It's also of diversity. It's also of sustainability um and financial responsibilities and opportunities for anyone who wants to live or work in Lewisville. So the first thing I would like to do is get some kind of a map, I guess, of where we are exactly. I mean, go to the county assessor's office and ask him, what are the housing values? Where are they in Lewisville? Do we have any other than Kestrel and perhaps the mobile? Do we have any other than Kestrel and perhaps the mobile home park that really is or could qualify as affordable? Then I would also like to see if we could partner with the county, since they are in charge of our affordable and low-income housing stock in town. Would they be willing to partner with us in providing something? I don't know what, but we can talk to them about what they would be willing to partner with us on. Then next, if we do add affordable units, I would prefer to see ones that were for sale rather than for rent. I think the biggest issue right now for us, and I'm just guessing at this, but from what I've heard and seen, people can't afford on their incomes to enter the housing market. And if you can't enter the housing market, you can never progress up the housing market. You can never get out of low-income housing because you're always paying rent and you're not building equity. And so I would like to see opportunities where they could get in at a lower price and then build equity so that they could become at some point sustainable economically. And then there is one city, and I can't remember where it was that I read about, that you, they build affordable housing, income, small homes for sale. But then they're limited on what percentage the increase can be when they go to sell it. So it's always in perpetuity at an affordable sale price. So it could be ongoing affordable entry-level housing. Then there's a couple of things that I'm curious about. I, I kind of like the idea of at least in some areas zoning it to allow for eighty years of some kind. I'd be willing to have that discussion. And second, having unrelated people living in the same house. I know that Louisville currently limits you to two unrelated people. We could increase that. I know Boulder limits it to three, so we could at least go up to three, maybe even four. And that would help with some lower-income folks. And then I, I really like the senior issue. So we, we do assist with their utility bills. And, and I know the state gives property tax rebates for seniors. But that's always been a big issue in Louisville is the person that, you know, bought their home in nineteen forty for five thousand dollars. And now they're escalated up to seven or eight hundred thousand. And they can't afford the property tax and the increase in utilities and things like that. So I would really like to see continued and increased support for the seniors. So those are my issues. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa, nice to see you. Thanks for the presentation and the rest of the staff that worked on this. I know this was a very much a group effort. You know, it, it, it's interesting, several years ago, we as part of the members in the county agreed this twelve percent, and I think the twelve percent is important across the county. The question is, is that something we can make a dent in, in Louisville? You know, the gap that was pointed out in the presentation is almost eight hundred units, which is significant. And given the current land use and current restrictions that we have, I would say that that probably is not easily obtainable. You know, Counselor Fahey had a lot of really interesting ideas. I think that could add dozens. But we're talking about maybe eight hundred or a thousand, we're really going to reach some of those goals. So I'm very interested in the concept of doing a housing study. I think it's something that, there's a few elements that I think are really important, you know, as we look at that. And, you know, the first is land use. I think there is, there's good examples. This is something that has been talked about by members of the, the council who've been on for more than a couple of years. It's TOD in the area of the BRT along Highway thirty-six. There may be some opportunities there. And as we look at those things, I, you know, that's where you make your gains, when you can have larger numbers like that and do it in a place where there's transportation. I think that's very important. The concept of ADUs, I, I remember when I got in council and the then planning director suggested that was the way to solve it. And I was totally against the idea. Six years later, I'm totally on board with the idea. It's because I, I have a different perspective, right? I mean, one is not understanding the needs of housing well enough in the city. And I feel like I'm better educated on that. So ADUs won't work everywhere. I do like all the, the variants that you showed, Lisa. I think that was very interesting. But I think it's something we need to be looking at in certain areas, what we will allow. Because I, you know, I think that's something that's, that's really important. You know, a lot of times though, we get, we get public input, not only in the two thousand sixteen or the twenty twenty community surveys, but when we've been talking about land use issues, we get a lot of input and we've had proposals on doing affordable housing. I, I would say that in general, the community supports affordable housing until you start talking about details and where it might be. And so the challenge will be the details, right? The devil will be in the details about how we do this, where we say ADUs are okay or where we say, mentorize housing like a TOD application might be okay. And so that, I think that will be a real challenge. But I think we should, whatever we do tonight, we should leave with the understanding that when June twenty-first, this council passed an inclusionary zoning. We did that purposefully. It is a direction we want to go. But I feel like we need more information. I would like to see us fast-track a housing study so that it precedes going into the comprehension, comp, comp plan process, so it can be integrated in there with some ideas and, and things that not only have council support, but community support as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Proton Maloney. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Great comments, Mayor Proton. Yeah, and I think, so there's a lot, there are a lot of really good ideas out there. And this is certainly one of those topics that screams for my, it's complicated t-shirt. It's, 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 you know, my, when my parents got divorced, my dad moved into a triplex and my mom rented out the basement. And those are two really good examples of how you make things work on less income or less money. And so when we talk about being able to do things like that, like ADUs, it, it supports both ends of it. It allows someone who doesn't need their whole house anymore to rent out a portion of it so that they're getting some, you know, passive income and allows someone who can't afford a whole house to rent a room or an apartment or a garage and allow someone to come into the market. So it actually helps both, both sides of that arrangement. So I think, I think that is something I'd be very interested in, in pursuing. And I think like, you, Mayor Proton, I get, sometimes I get worried about the idea of ADUs when I think of it as, you know, an investment or, you know, okay, so people are going to build a bunch of things and change the character of, of Louisville by adding on. And so I think we need to be careful with how we do it. And that we're still able to, to be, you know, happy with our surroundings. And I was in Nashville and they had these little homes on the front of the lot and literally apartment buildings in their backyard. I've never seen anything like it, I, like a four-story apartment building in the backyard of a three-bedroom house in the front. It was just the most interesting thing, but you know, I don't, I don't know now. And now it's like, when I saw it, I was like, this is awful. And now I maybe understand a little bit of what the intention is to get some more affordable housing in the area. But, you know, I don't think that's where we want to go, right? So being, being thoughtful of that. I think the transportation-oriented development is huge potential for, you know, game-changing moment of, of multiple units, not these six units here, four units here, but, but more of substantial in one place. And I, and I think we have to be thoughtful, you know, that, that a development, a large development in an area like that can't be twelve percent affordable, right? That we're, as we all understand mathematics, we're never going to get to our goals if we're, if we're only heading, if only our new things are twelve percent. And we'll never get to twelve percent overall. So I think there, there's an opportunity for more intense affordable housing areas. But then in the complicated piece, we have to make sure we're not creating, you know, areas of town for quote-unquote, poor people, right? We want, we, we want to be creating areas where there's mixed populations, mixed, so not just all of Louisville, but even that one neighborhood has mixed income and mixed jobs and mixed lifestyles and all that. And so being careful too, not to create the project somewhere. So it's, there's so many different pieces to it. Councilmember Fahey, you know, you brought up two, two battling issues, right? Is we want people to come in and buy a home and have it appreciate over time. And that's the only way they're really going to get into the market. But then if we want it permanently affordable, it doesn't appreciate. And so they don't get that appreciation when they go to sell it because it's been restricted, right? So they, they, they only get a little bit of appreciation, but they are paying down a principal. They are, it is still beneficial, but it doesn't have the power. But if you don't make it affordable forever, then, you know, ten, twenty years later, when they go in to sell it again, you no longer have that affordable housing because it's now just at the market rate. So that's hard, you know, how you find that, that balance of those two things. And rentals can be great because it does allow people to get in at a, at a cheaper amount. But one thing that we don't have on here is access to capital, right? Other ways that the city could potentially, you know, federal government has ways of backing loans to encourage homeownership for people that don't have fifty, sixty thousand dollars of a down payment, right? So I'd be interested if there's any way the city could, you know, consider, you know, backing loans or, or helping banks, partnering with banks to allow for lower interest loans so that people who can, I, as most of you know, I'm in re, property, rental property management. And a lot of people, they pay a rent that's equal to a mortgage. They just can't get the down payment to pay the mortgage. But if they had the money to have, to get in, they could afford the mortgage, but they can't ever get there because they can't collect that much money. So access to capital, access to the house in the first place, I think is something I didn't see that is maybe too complicated. I'd love to hear about that. Just sorry, looking through my notes, definitely interested in the housing study. I mean, Planner Richie said, well, you know, Lewis has never done a planning, it's a housing study. It's like, well, oh my God, then we definitely need to do that. That seems incredibly important that that gets done soon. And to, you know, Mayor Proton, you said so many things. Well, you know, I think there's that NIMBY, you know, issue that, that not in my backyard, like, I love it, it's great. But not like, not here, not, not my neighbor's house or not, I don't want to, you know, duplex on the fars, like, put it somewhere else. And so I think we, we do have to address that and we have to be brave as council members to be willing to have individuals upset with us for the greater good. And I think as a greater population, we are very excited about affordable housing. And it's something that I definitely ran on when I ran for council. And I, and I hear so much positive feedback from our residents that we are addressing this and that we do care about this. And so I think you're right, I think we're going to run into some really tough moments when we're, when, when the, when the final decisions come. I think I will comment that the revenue piece is less attractive to me. These ideas of linkage fees and other ways to make a developer just pay money towards this idea, like, I don't know, I'm not hearing a lot of ways in which, where we, we would spend that money. So I'm fine with the idea, if we had some concepts for, okay, great, so now we have five million dollars. How does that get us more affordable housing? So if you, for instance, tied a linkage fee into giving loans to people to back their, you know, mortgages, like, oh, great. I love that idea. We'll, we'll tie linkage fees to, you know, backing people's loans. But otherwise, like, just us collecting money, I, I would need some reason that, some purpose that we have with that money. But because otherwise, what I want is the actual affordable housing, not fees and loo or other, other dedications. Like, we actually want the affordable housing. So I, I think I'll stop there. One other note here that I circled that seems important, I can't read it. Oh, the density bonus for, for affordable housing. So, you know, if we want more affordable housing, we give a little bit higher density in order to get that affordable housing. Again, my understanding of it and the, and the image you gave was pretty great. But this, this idea of, and building fifty units and where someone could do that, I don't know. But I'm building fifty units and six of them will be affordable. But if you let me build sixty units, just ten more, I can give you four more or five more affordable housing units. I'm almost doubling the affordable housing because you're giving those extra ten units. And that's just them running the numbers. And so I think that, that's slightly attracted to me. But again, it, it creates density which people are going to struggle with. And all of this conversation creates more people in our town, which some people are definitely going to struggle with. And I, and I, I'm definitely a non-supportive residential growth in Louisville without a very specific purpose of providing diversity of housing and affordable housing. Like, that's, that's the reason. So, so I guess my last comment would be on the single-family housing, you know, getting rid of that zoning. I think the last thing that I want, and I'll try not to speak for council, is a new neighborhood somewhere in Louisville. That's all single-family homes that are a million dollars each. But I don't know why we would add that population into our town as the, as the increased population. I think we're going to increase our populations with some real intention to add to our diversity. So those are all my comments. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Next in the queue, we have Councilmember Lipton.
I can't remember what everybody said because you've been talking so much. I am, maybe I'm the only one on council who actually lived in ADUs. And it was when I was younger and broker, and it really did serve a good purpose. And I, as well as being able to house members of families, you know, the the aging generation to be closer to their primary families by having a, a separate, a close unit to where the families are living. So I, I've seen ADUs work very well. In fact, where I grew up on, on East Coast, they were actually very normal customary to have. But, you know, having, having said that, I mean, it seems like we're talking about a lot of tools in the tool belt that we could adopt. And I think they're all very valuable. They all serve a purpose and kind of chip away at the larger problem. I do agree with the comment that, you know, we likely do need a housing study that will provide context and uniqueness to the Louisville situation and what, you know, our, our residents want, what we're trying to get to. I think that would be a, a good investment. And having that as a foundational study for the development of the revised comprehensive plan, I think would be valuable too. I, I'm extremely concerned about the NIMBYism effects of all of this. And I think, you know, I think if you have the foundational work done, particularly in the comp plan, when it becomes time to look at specific and individual applications and applying that to the context of various neighborhoods and, you know, or vacant land, I think it could be very helpful because it does diffuse the the not my backyard effect of people that, you know, are trying to fight the development, but, you know, have lost, already lost the war on the, on the policy work that needs to be done. So I also, you know, I, nobody's really mentioned this. We do need to leverage on our, on the county, regional and state resources. I mean, when we talk about financing, you know, ourselves, some of these projects and whatnot. I mean, the, I mean, the numbers are so huge and we're relatively so small. While we do rely on the county, who also then understands how to do this stuff well and be able to get the tax benefits and work with the state agencies and, and actually be able to put together projects that, you know, can work for us. And I think that model is something I'm still intrigued about continuing. I think trying to do this on our own, I mean, we'll be nipping at it on the margins, but I, I don't think we're going to be able to take a, a big bite out of it. So, you know, finding way perhaps to get more resources towards the, the county and the state requirements, I, I think would be really good. And, and if I recall, the county is supposed to be, you know, they're doing their own studies. They're supposed to be doing, you know, they've talked about doing their own tax. And we've, you know, generally, I think, indicated some support in having them take the lead in this stuff. And then it becomes an issue for us more of land use and where it might go. And I, I, I think that we're more capable of doing that and actually trying to do large financings and, and doing it on our own. So I'd be, I'd be supportive of doing a, a housing study if there's one. If there is one item that I would, you know, suggest you might consider, and that is on the density bonuses as related to the inclusionary zoning that we have already talked about. I, I don't think that would be a tough thing to do. And, and I think if you want some short-term results, and in fact, we're going to get any development as a result of the inclusionary zoning. I, I don't think you want to punt that for, you know, three or four years in the future. That's something you can do in the shorter term. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. Councilmember Lai.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton, Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, thanks. Um, really, really good comments and. Uh, thank you, Plainer Ritchie, for. For uh great materials that you put together and. Uh, on a really important topic, I mean, as I. Uh, and, and a couple others, I think, said before, we're considering the inclusionary housing. Ordinance, um, you know, it's nice to get a little bit more comprehensive. Overview of what, what's out there and to be able to decide direction. Um, I guess, I had sort of three. Buckets of things that I wanted to. To raise. One, one has to do with this. Uh, kind of the. Small town character, another is a little bit about history and then a little bit on tools where we can talk about specific things that might do. I, I think every, every election cycle. We revisit this small town character. Come, I, I don't think anybody's run for council in probably forty years who didn't talk about it in some way. Um, and it's not a cliche, but it, you know, it's something that, that I think evolves over time. One of the things I've learned about it is that it is too many. Particularly people who have not or are not comfortable. It, it is not a welcoming comment. My lights went out, but that's. Sorry about that, um. But I, I do think, um. I think we've got to, to think in terms a little bit of, of what Anne Marie mentioned at the outset, which is what, what our values are. I think. We, I have no doubt that people in council and a lot of people in Louisville are very serious about. Affordable housing and trying to, to uh take steps in this direction. It's the details that are always the challenge. I think in the, the history. Piece of it, I think there's some really positive things that we've done of which the inclusionary zoning ordinance is, is one. Kestrel, um, I think is just, uh. You know, it's, it was a very, very challenging project. It was one of the most gratifying. Parts of being on council. Last few years, and in my view, just to see something like that uh come together for us to support it. Uh, for the partnership among uh communities, uh for us to have gone from owning that property and administering it. In our own housing authority, giving that uh. That authority to the Boulder County Housing Authority and then working with them to try to bring that about, I think it's been a. Really good thing, and I think it's been a real net, a positive to our community. Um. A few years ago, when I was working on the Boulder, or the Boulder County Consortium of Cities, we. We were studying affordable housing and. I was probably the most exciting thing we did was to pass that twelve percent. Goal and to adopt it ourselves. And what I was very, very proud of is that our council. Every member of council went to the big summit that we had. And I didn't know who was. We, we put this together and, and not every council member of everybody in, in Boulder County showed up, but ours did. And so I, I took that as a real, real plus and that we are serious. And I think. Uh, that this council is probably uh even, even more committed to that. Uh, perhaps, I think there's the challenging part of the history, I think, is. You know, part of it we know is market. I mean, those, the figures for what a single family house costs in Louisville are just, they're just jaw dropping. And we all know that and we all benefit in some ways from it. Uh, we. Some have a hard time with the taxes with their fixed incomes. Um, and, you know, we're landlocked, that's a challenging part of it. I think the darker part of all this is that we have. Been a town that's been in place for a long time. We've made a lot of housing choices and land use choices that are not going away. We can make a lot of changes. I think we owe it to our community. To look at that, it is going to be. There are going to be a lot of challenging and difficult conversations. Because it's when people start to believe that their oxes are being gored. And land use and affordable housing is always an area where people come in with those preconceptions. I think it's going to be incredibly challenging. Our comp plan is, is hostile to density. And, and it's frankly hostile to anything that's single family homes, but. Um, that process is really going to be an interesting one uh coming up. Um, I think it was said that maybe we don't have time to wait for that process to, to get through. I think that's probably right. Before we start making steps for, and I think we, we definitely need to do that. Um, but the, the, you know, the history is, is, it's got great parts, it's got challenging parts, it's got. Really things that are going to be very, very difficult to overcome. Um, I think we can do it. I think it's going to take a lot of courage. I think it's going to take leadership and political courage to do that. And the willingness to spend some political capital. On tools, you know, I, I at least try to pride myself on being evidence-based. There's a lot of tools that you've. Um, summarized, uh, Plainer Ritchie, and I'm sure some of them, well, all of them work in different. Places. I don't know how all of them work here. I know that, um. You know, the, the first thing that comes to mind, which I think has been mentioned uh in a variety of ways by, by several people. Uh, Councilmember Lipton, for example, was, you know. Pulling in as many of the county, state and regional. Resources as we possibly can. I think that's absolutely critical. Um, but I also think the federal money that's coming in, we ought to be looking at that money as at least uh one. Place where we might uh make some headway by, by. Uh, thinking how we can spend that in a good way and on infrastructure, it's gonna be helpful for the people. Who haven't been able to, to take advantage. I, I think the, that's, so getting resources, that's, that's one. I, I wouldn't say it's a low-hanging fruit, but I think it's something we, we've got to do. And we've got to be working not just on the money. But we've got to be working with our partners. Um, BCHA is just a terrific organization in my view, and they know what they're doing, and we ought to be at every stage trying to get as much help. And support from them as we can. And I think the, to the point about what. We're going to do to make our twelve percent, I think what we're going to do to make our twelve percent is we, we've got a lot of. Cobbling together of a lot of different. Uh, tools, and I think one of the tools is working with other communities and seeing what we can do to help support them. There may be some of that twelve percent. That ends up being, uh, how do we uh find ways to support the other communities? We've got those. Now I'm forgetting the names of them, but we, we give them up every year, our little. My, my tongue is tied. I think we gave them to BCHA this year, we gave them to Flammer County one year, but. Their money's for partnering with private uh contractors, as I'm understanding, to private developers to try to build. Uh, housing, and maybe we need to sort of look at some of those. Uh, those resources as well. But I think working with other communities is not a bad thing. It's a little ironic to be. Perhaps drawing on what other people are doing as a way of meeting our own. Uh, requirements, but that may be part of what we do. In terms of the study, very excited about that, absolutely. Uh, transport, TOD, the transportation oriented development, I think that's worth looking at, I think. Incentives of all kinds, incentives are kind of the Louisville. At least in the way I've been taught for the past number of years. That's the way we try to do. As many things as we can in lieu of. Uh, heavy-handed regulation. I think the more we can do. Just with, with that sort of model, I think the better. It's one of the reasons I'm not as fond. Of inclusionary zoning and more, more fond of some of the kinds of incentives we talked about tonight. Would love. To deal or to look at ADUs, like we didn't talk too much about the mobile home parks. There's a lot of ferment right now. In how uh cities help to encourage. The maintenance and sustainability of mobile home parks that are the one in Louisville, obviously private hands, and we. Need to be very respectful of that involved folks. I think another thing is. Uh, senior housing is huge, and that's something I think that would be really good. It'd be really interesting to see if we can provide incentives for people to. You know, for example, outfit some of the homes that we have with, um, with. Some kinds of upgrades that allow seniors to stay in their homes longer. Um. The final thing that I'd say, um, moving from tools. You know, I think we're going to have to move from tools to decision. Um, but, um. I think it's really important. To educate and involve people in the public process. I think. That there's a part of leadership which is just doing stuff. And making decisions right here in council, and that's it. But. Especially when affordable housing is concerned, I just, I see and I hear, and I bet you guys do too. A, a lot of reaction. Whenever you talk about that. If it's affordable housing, like, oh, my kid wants a five hundred thousand dollar house and wants to be able to afford that. That's not what we're talking about, I don't think. And, you know, when we start getting out of that, there's just all kinds of really. Challenging assumptions to get over. Um, I think we're going to get part of this. Public process when we deal with the uh. Uh, some of the recommendations of the task force for diversity, inclusion and equity. Um, I'll be very interested in what they suggest. Um, but I think it's going to be up to us not just to. Decide without an awful lot of. Input, doesn't have to be hugely time-consuming and take a year and all that for that to happen. But I think it's really important for people to get the, for us to have a big community conversation. And I think it's important to have that before our discussions on comprehensive plan, because I think. They're going to be very related and we can't do it all probably in the comp plan process. So I'm sorry for. A lot of those, you know, for the length of the comments, but I think it's really, I think it's important for us to take stock of. That this is not at all, it's a real easy thing to talk about in very. Idealistic terms, and I certainly started that way. But I do remember one time, and some of the people in this council will remember it. When I was in the consortium of cities, we were dealing with some of the stuff, and there was so much kind of negativity that I got from at least some council members. At one point, you know, maybe I was just having a bad night, but. Uh, we were moving forward to having this uh county. Get together and to see if people were going to be interested in making a pledge like the one we did end up agreeing to. And I remember saying, you know. If people really aren't interested. In affordable housing, I don't have to keep going to these meetings. Because I've got kind of better things to do. I mean, I was kind of grumpy that night, but I mean, it felt sort of like people were just sort of throwing. Cold water on the process. And, and of course, people said, no, no, this is, this is important to us. Um, and they came through. But it's, this is going to be a lot heavier lift over time, and I don't want, I don't want to suggest that. Because if you do it right, if you're actually doing something to address the problem. You're gonna run up against some really, really challenging. Public backlash if you don't draw people in, educate them and have the hard conversations, because it's going to take that. But I am absolutely thrilled about the possibility of a study. I, I appreciate everybody who came to talk, the two speakers at the beginning. Terrific comments, all of you guys have done wonderfully in the comments you made, but I, this is a subject that's, that I'm kind of a long hauler on, and. I, I'm really happy that we're taking this step. This is a. This is quantum leap ahead, I think, for us to really be taking it as seriously as we are, and I'm glad for that. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay, and I appreciate all the comments tonight. I think that a, a lot of us have mentioned this, but there's a lot of. Community agreement around the need to take action on affordable housing, and then. There is a lot of disagreement on what actions those should be. And so I think that's. Where we're going to have to have the more nuanced conversations, and Councilmember Dickinson will have to make up the T-shirts for all of us to wear that says it's complicated and. We're all your neighbors and, you know, having these candid conversations is not easy, but it's, it's important and we need to do it and come up with discrete steps. On how we can move forward in solutions that work for our community. So I just want to start by echoing a, a number of Councilmember Lipton's points. Um, the county's been talking about additional taxes to help us support reaching fifteen percent goal. I heard a number of people say. They don't like to talk about the fees or these other things, but it's like, in reality, making this housing affordable is not inexpensive. So we have to be able to pay for it as a government. I think we all recognize that. So the county had initially been talking about taking the leadership role on having a countywide tax, because we all recognize that this is a regional problem. And that we all are going to need to address this collectively. So I think one concrete step we could take is to ask Councilmember Brown to kind of take this. Issue to the Consortium of Cities on our behalf and just represent our council, saying, you know, we want to understand where the county is on this tax. And can the county come up with, um, can, can the county present some additional information on their proposal and what they would want to spend the tax on? And how that gets us to our fifteen percent goal or closer toward our fifteen percent goal and how that distributes housing around the county, kinds of those things. Because I really do think if we work together, we'll be stronger in all of this, and we come up with a collective vision instead of having, you know, maybe. Like right now, there's zero units of affordable housing in Superior. So it's like, you know, there, so we have to do this all together, um, to get to twelve. And I know it's easy to say, well, our, our part will be somewhere else. It's like, well, no. We all need to understand collectively how we'll get there, or everybody else will just throw the units into some other area, hoping they get there. And so. I think that's important to, to ask Councilmember Brown to reflect that for us and to get some more information from the county on the funding. And, you know, where they're going and how that's polling and how we can help them get that resource and then how they'll distribute that out. And so Councilmember Lipton really talked about that. And making sure that we get some info on the county since they are responsible from house, for housing and human services, and they have some of the expertise that we don't. And additionally, they asked for our housing authority several years ago. They said, Louisville, we want your housing authority. Will you give it to us? So it's like, you know, let's get some follow-up on that and understand it. Um, so I, I do, I, it sounds like there's consensus on doing a housing study. I won't quarrel with that, but I do wonder if we shouldn't have a larger. Uh, focus than just Louisville on a housing study, like if we would want the Consortium of Cities to do a housing study. To understand the regional impacts of housing, like that student housing is, is a factor in our region, right? Like student housing associated with the university impacts all of us. Um, probably into Brumfield and then like other factors, you know, the job centers, whether it's. You know, Boulder's Job Center, Louisville's Job Center, Lafayette's Job Centers, they all pull from the housing in different ways. So. I do think we're more interconnected than maybe we like to admit. Um, and so. If we want to do our own housing study, that's fine. And if that's what everybody wants to do to show that we're doing something and to take a step, that's fine. I just wonder if it wouldn't be. A good idea to try to actually get everyone collectively to do a housing study. I think that that might be impactful. And then I have just a couple of like, like minor questions for staff to follow up with, um, after the fact that there's data and information, I think, would help us with these conversations. So like, in tonight's presentation, the number of units in Louisville was listed as two hundred and seventy-three. But in a twenty eighteen Boulder County Housing Authority presentation, they listed the number of permanently affordable units in three hundred, as three hundred forty-seven. So I just wonder what's the difference in those two numbers? And like, did I just magically find units? Yay, we're closer. So, uh, I would like to follow up on that and try to understand like what number, how did they get the three forty-seven? And, you know, just to nail down like, where are we now and understand where we would be. And then, um, I just haven't seen the census data yet and dug into it. So if you could send us the census data, that would be great to have some fun with and some links to the resources that are good. And I had heard from some, some planners down at Dr. Cog that maybe this year's census, the demographic data was. Not necessarily comparable to previous census demographic data, so I wonder if that issue's been resolved.
You know, that's, we haven't had a chance to really dive in and parse the data and understand differences and questions and things like that. So. We'll have to get back to you on that. We just got a real preliminary high-level um report. We have not had a chance to, you know, analyze it.
Okay, because I wouldn't want to compare, like if the um process for collecting census data this last round was significantly different than it has been. In prior years, and you cannot compare the two pieces, then I think we should not compare the two pieces. And just understand what the limitations of the data collection were. Uh, but if the data is good and usable, I would really also like to understand more about the development, uh, the apartment development that's been built over on. Interlock and in Brumfield with the new census data, because we hear a lot about how, you know, if we build like that. Because we hear a lot about how, you know, if we build like that, that will get more diversity and will get more wage diversity, ethnic diversity, all kinds of benefits. And so I would just love to understand like what has actually happened in that development compared to the rest of Broomfield, just to, like, that's right here, that's right with us. So I would just like to know, did it really work right here in our own backyard? Um, and um, one thing that wasn't discussed was a citizen survey. Um, so I mean, we all talked that there are these different NIMBY issues and preferences and this and that. And I just think having citizen feedback on which tools are community supports, like buying existing housing stock and making it permanently affordable, that's a tool that was listed in the um, county's housing strategy, like is that something community members would support? Would communities member support, um, like if we are to rezone properties to housing, would they support requirements on the developers for any rezoning to have high, high levels of uh, permanently affordable housing? And if we are to do those things, would the county accept those units into their housing program? So I just have a lot of questions about things like that before I would know how to go forward. Somebody, I think Councilmember Dickinson made a comment about making it so people can rent a room in their house out. I just want to make it clear to anyone watching at home that people can rent rooms out in their house now. Feel free to do that. You can rent a room, you can rent your basement. Uh, so that's not a limitation that I'm aware of. One thing that didn't come up tonight, um, and I don't know if council members would have interest in studying this in the future, but it's really looking at the impact of business assistance packages and the jobs pop mix. So we talk about this all the time, that, you know, we have too many jobs, we have too many jobs, we have too many jobs. And then I wonder like, why are all of our communities still trying to recruit more jobs if we have too many jobs? And I wonder if we could get a regional agreement to stop doing that. So part of the reason we have to do business assistance packages is because everyone else is doing business assistance packages and you have to play the game or you're not business friendly. But what if we all said, you know what, there are too many jobs in Boulder, there are too many jobs in Louisville. This is like an, this is something a politician's never supposed to say, I recognize this, but like we have more jobs than we have capacity for to fill. So I wonder why we would be giving away tax revenue to continue this. Um, so I, I just wonder if there's any interest of pursuing something with our neighboring communities to see if we could have an IGA around our business assistance programs um, to try to help address this imbalance. Um, another thing we didn't talk about, but that we now have the authority to address is local minimum wage. Um, so we keep talking about the lowest paid employees in Louisville and things like that and their ability to afford to live here. Um, cities now have the ability to regulate minimum wage in Colorado. And so I think that is a tool we should seriously consider. And again, I think that's a tool that would be better considered regionally and with our region and with our neighboring community. So this would be another topic that I wonder if we couldn't get the consortium to look at seriously and expedite. Because the wages are not keeping up with the cost of living and minimum wages at our region certainly cannot uh, national minimum wage is not addressing the minimum wage that we have in our region. So I do recognize the challenges it would put on our businesses if we address minimum wage alone. But I think addressing the wages of workers is, is really important. And if we want to make sure everybody can afford um, to live here, they need to be paid a wage that allows them to live here. And so we would need wages to go up if that's what we want to see. Um, because I mean, that's just another piece of the puzzle. So I think we should seriously consider addressing minimum wage. Something else, community members write to me about a lot is rentals versus um, for sale housing. Councilmember Fahey, I think, talked about that, wanting to see more wealth building and people being able to grow wealth and um, expand their um, their personal assets. And so I wonder about rentals, sorry, Councilmember Dickinson closure is um, rentals in town and if we would have um, any appetite to have some kind of rental program where we have more information about, like we don't do rental licensing and we don't have a lot of rental regulations here in the community. So like if we would want to license rentals, understand um, more about how many like rentals um, one person owns, if we would want more homeownership. Uh, I want, I just don't have enough information about how many of our existing houses, whether they're single family uh, or attached uh, or apartments, I just don't have enough information about how many of those are being rented as businesses versus um, you know, owned. Or if it's just a family that owns one rental um, versus like a corporation buying up all the housing stock and renting it out. So I, I would love to have more information about rentals in town and what we could do as a rental licensing program and how that could impact affordability. And on that same vein, um, vacation rental by owners not allowed in our town, but we all get reports from people from time to time that vacation rental by owner is creeping into their neighborhood and impacting livability and impacting accessibility to housing stock. So I don't know how prevalent, prevalent, prevalent that is in our community at this time. But I think that's another, again, this is going to not impact the thousands of units that we're looking at. But it's certainly impacting maybe the hundreds or hundred of units. So it'd be interesting to understand that. Um, and then um, so they say you talked a little bit about the census data and that, you know, we're older as a community. And so a lot of times we talk about, well, how can we do things to get even more older as a community? So I wonder if we can also focus on if we really are older as a community. That means the segment of the population that's missing is not older, it's younger. And so I wonder if we can look at that, some things to address uh, those issues. Because a lot of times we do focus, like we've added senior housing. So it's not surprising to me that our population aged, we added senior housing. And it's, you know, it's not also surprising to me that we have decreased in household size because we've added a lot of, of attached units in the last 10 years. So like we've added the uh, inventory at alfalfa, we've added duplexes, we've added townhomes. So we've added a lot of housing stock that would, you would sort of expect to have lower numbers of occupants per household. Um, so I guess that doesn't surprise me, but if, if all we do is continue to focus on senior housing, um, then we still will not address the issues with housing missing for, you know, uh, first time homeowners and even the middle, at least I had on her slide, like what about everyone in the middle too? So I, I'm not sure that I, I, I just think I need more information around all of that. Um, you guys all said a lot of things, so I had to take notes as you guys were all talking to be able to reflect back on some of the things you were saying. Um, so um, it was mentioned that we could do a small area plan as a short term solution. I just guess I want to say that I am opposed to that idea. The, the small area plans were not, at least the last two we did, and maybe the staff has a different way of handling it this time, that they were not short term exercises. In my experience, like I think they took a year, they took it, it was a lot. It, it was not a like, hey, we're going to do this and then we're going to roll it out and we, it feels very fresh that we just did that. So I'm not sure how we would get a different outcome, you know, since we just did that. So I guess I hear a lot of people saying like, well, we need to do things before the comp plan, we need to do things before the comp plan. I actually think the comprehensive plan is the process by which we address these things, because we get the citizen input, like it goes through all the steps. And then at the end of it, the comprehensive plan has changed. So it incorporates all the feedback. So I, I understand the desire to do things in the short term. I think that's why, you know, I pushed so hard and, and why we all supported the inclusionary zoning. Um, I would love to see the county move more quickly on attacks to be able to start buying units and building units as quickly as we can. Uh, but I think if we're going to change our underlying zoning, our comprehensive plan like that is a deliberate process for a reason. And I think any shortcuts we try to take on that will end up taking just as long or longer. So I would just encourage us like, that, I think the cop plan is due next year. I would just encourage us to do the comprehensive plan process, like start into it and um, see, see where we land. So thank you. And um, I just want to thank the staff for all the work they've put into this so far and the community members for weighing in. Because like Councilmember Dickinson says, it's complicated and this is work that we need to do and it's valuable work. So thank you all. Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you. And I was just curious, I don't know if Megan or Lisa can uh, tell us what, what is the county doing now? I mean, they came out with their, you know, their plans, so to speak, or their analysis. And I, they're talking about next steps, but they were talking about next steps two years ago before COVID pandemic. So does anybody have an update on that?
Sure. So yeah, I'm going to let um, Deputy City Commander Davis or um, Planning Director to care, time in on that. And then I do have a follow up question just to staff based on some of your comments before, hopefully before we move on to the next item.
So um, you know, I would say the, the county is um, they are working, they've kind of been working at um, sort of different, different levels, kind of the planning level, the administrator's level to try to encourage and work with local governments um, around implementation of the strategies included in the plan. And um, we do meet, you know, with the housing authority as the, as opportunities come up and also as we're looking at strategies. Um, they, you know, I think intended to have a summit and that was before COVID. And I think that was another, you know, planning to be another um, effort to get the, the local elected officials together to have further discussion around advancing implementation. So I think that has been, you know, delayed a little bit um, because of COVID. Um, but I would say in terms of sort of a more regional study, I think the, the local governments um, are, are doing, you know, a lot of them have already done sort of some of those housing studies and they're, they're advancing these efforts at the local level at very different levels. The larger municipalities within Boulder County obviously have more capacity and also access to funding to help support that implementation. Um, but I do think, um, you know, there, there may be an opportunity, as the mayor mentions, to work with the, with the consortium to better understand where everyone is at and the counties does, you know, efforts with funding. But I think if we are to pursue a study, it would, it would most likely be something local. We may be able to tie in some of the regional data and regional influences. But um, I, I, I'm just not sure if it would be um, you know, realistic to get some of the other folks to the table who are already further along in this work for various, various reasons. So if that helps. So Rob, if you want to add anything to that.
You know, I, I would just add that um, you know, some of the efforts that were happening, happening mostly pre-COVID and they kind of really stalled out where they were, you know, the, the you know, the, the, the county and the consortium of communities that adopted the strategic plan were trying to get resources together. And then really kind of enable local communities to take these next steps. So that was really, so I think there, there are regional things that need to happen. But I think the, the strategies that we have do suggest that there shouldn't be the balance of local and regional strategies. So um, I think that's some, that's, you know, one of the reasons why staff wanted to bring back some of these local solutions as well. Um, so I would just add that I, I think um, you know, enabling local and smaller jurisdictions to have the resources they need, that's something that was a focus again prior to COVID um, that we were trying to work with Longmont and the county on.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I appreciate your comments, Mayor, about doing a cooperative study with the municipalities and the counties around us. I, I would never argue against that. Um, but when I, we went through the staff presentation, it pointed out a lot of things to me that were Louisville barriers that we need to address. So I think both those things need to happen. And whether we do this as a separate housing study or we do it part of the comprehensive plan, I, you know, there's different ways to do this and I'm not going to argue that one's better than the other. But I do think we need to focus on specific things in Louisville um, that are barriers and, and have discussion um, about some of the details that'll be really, really difficult to, to work through, I believe. Um, and as I mentioned in my comments, if we have to deal with community input and the comp plan does that. So maybe we already have a structure we could use to do that. Um, but some of these ideas that we've talked about today, I don't believe are going to have strong community support, even though they may be the best way to go. Um, so, but we need to have those discussions and it needs to be open government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Uh, I just wanted to mention that I'm, I'm more than happy to go to the consortium and talk to them about the um, both countywide tax related to affordable housing. Um, you know, I, I think in my comments at the very beginning of this conversation, it, you know, one of the things that is clear to me that, you know, building alone is not going to create more affordable housing. Um, if anything, it just makes more very expensive housing. Um, and so we're going to have to have appropriate regulations, appropriate um, you know, interventions um, from, you know, our city and the county government um, in order to, you know, make sure that the housing, that if housing is added, um, it's affordable and to, to use our existing housing stock potentially and, and convert that if possible. So um, I, I, I think um, you know, a regional study, it, it strikes me that, you know, one of our neighboring communities may be engaging in a housing study, um, maybe Lafayette. We should probably reach out if, if we're not, if there are some communities that are farther down the road as the interim city manager mentioned. Um, then, you know, let's partner with the, the cities that are a little less farther down the road. Um, there has been, we have had conversations during our joint issues meetings with Superior about um, some of the conversations they're having about affordable housing. Is there an interest from Superior, from Lafayette to do, you know, something between us? You know, because we are, you know, of, you know, this sort of southeastern part of the, of the, of the county. So I think there's a, there's a collaboration that, that can happen there. Um, but you know, to, to Councilmember Maloney's point, I will say that, you know, I, I have specific questions about our community. Um, and I would love to be able to put those in a broader context, but we certainly need to know, know our, our specific information. So I will take, I will take this information and, and have another conversation with um, our partners at the consortium. Um, and then, um, and you know, we can, we can, maybe I would, I would suggest that staff could start to have conversations with Lafayette and maybe Superior specifically about potentially um, coordinating on a regional study.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown. And I was just looking through my notes and just one thing I didn't get to um, was just, we've talked a lot about um, removing uh, regulations to expansions and ADUs and all of these things. One thing I've heard a lot from community members is that one thing they perceive to be driving up prices in their neighborhood is people buying homes and then significantly expanding them. So we continue to hear from people that, oh, we need smaller houses in the community, we need more access to these little homes. So like my, my neighborhood um, has a lot of homes that are 1,200 square feet or 1,000 square feet. And so, you know, um, people are concerned when they see someone come in and then buy a thousand square foot home and then build a 2,500 square foot home and then sell it. Um, so I think we are getting a lot of market pressure to redevelop on our properties. And so the smaller homes and what, you know, maybe was considered entry level homes at one time, um, are being purchased and then made much larger. And so I wonder um, if some kind of study through that, if whatever we do as a housing state to, to look at limiting expansion of our housing stock that's not affordable housing, but is our more affordable market rate housing. I think we should come up with like terms for all these things. So we're all clear that we're talking about the same thing. But a lot of community members, when they write in and, and, and call in um, are talking about market rate housing that is more affordable, they're not talking about government housing. Um, and so one perception that I get from a number of community members is that these scrapes and then building of very large homes is contributing to the lack of more, and I'm not talking about government affordable housing, but more market rate affordable housing, which is still not within the realm of what the staff has put up as affordable. But it would be more affordable than a larger home on the same lot. So I think it's a complicated issue, but I think it's something worth understanding better as well. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, one is that um, just lest we put too much on the Consortium of Cities. Remember, um, as, as um, the, the staff of the, who, who attend those will, will tell you, there's no budget. And they do, what it is mostly is a clearinghouse and sometimes it's been a really good kind of bully pulpit for certain issues and to get people together, it's really good at sharing ideas as, as others, including uh, can, uh, Councilman Brown will tell you, really good forum for that. Um, so it may take, you know, any kind of efforts like that. I mean, I think, you know, I hope we can make good use of Boulder County Housing Authority, because they've got, you know, they've done, they've been through a lot of these wars and they have a lot of really good uh, good information and good staffers who can, can help us know. good information and good staffers who can, can help us know what's out there and, and frankly may, may help us to figure out where we don't have to expend additional resources to get the kind of information about what others are doing. The other thing is, is I, I certainly don't want to be misunderstood that we want to have some process in addition to the comp plan process. I think there's, there's certainly, that is going to be a big issue and there's some of the issues that we've been talking about tonight that will get folded into the comprehensive plan process. But not all these tools are tools that are going to be necessarily an issue in a comp plan. I mean, some of these, uh, are very much, you know, might be low hanging fruit. They might be some things that we can do. I mean, we just did inclusionary zoning and that's something we didn't wait around for the comp plan process for that. And so I, I think we just need to be smart about when we, when and in what form. I think my bigger, my bigger point is that there are, you know, there are some, some kinds of, um, tools that are out there which are going to generate more controversy than others and, and we just need to be, we need to get out front of, uh, public opinion and make sure people under have the right information before they go, uh, and say that this is a no-go from the beginning. So anyway, thanks.
All right. Thank you. So there were a lot of requests for additional information that I know the staff will work on out of this, but it sounded like there was general consensus on, uh, having staff bring back a proposal for a housing study and maybe doing a little information gathering with Superior and Lafayette to see if there's any interest in doing it collaboratively at all. And so that could kind of be like a choice within the packet when you bring back whatever the proposal is on a housing study. So we could all understand that a little bit better. It sounded like folks wanted to see the housing study on a timeline that was, I mean, we obviously are very booked this year, right? Like we're redoing our building code. We're looking at, um, other, so we want to see it, but we also have a lot of other priorities. So I think we all have to recognize that, that, you know, this housing study wasn't one of the things on the work plan and we still have a lot of major issues coming up in this year for the planning department. So I think we just need to say like, this is a priority. We want this housing study on some kind of a timeline that doesn't have to conform to the normal budget cycle and you can bring a budget amendment. But we also all have to understand the reality of like the, we are a small city of 20,000 people and that we only have staff that can do so many things at once. And like we have a lot of really, really great important things that are competing with each other. So, um, I tried to capture that as delicately as I could to say we want it soon, but we have to understand that soon is a relative term and that has to compete with our other priorities. I didn't hear exactly consensus around the next statement I'll make, so just correct me council, but I'm just trying to thread the needle here. So it sounded like, it sounded like people wanted to proceed with the small, uh, with the comprehensive plan process. Recognizing like we need to have the comprehensive plan come next year. So hopefully there's money in the budget for comprehensive planning and that we all would say that that's a priority on our work plan in January so that we give that the time and dedication that it'll need. Um, and through that process, I think we can understand what additional things we need from citizen input, surveys, charrettes, whatever those things are to make sure we have all the information and the information sharing between community members that needs to happen in order to get some of those other changes. So I didn't see any head nods or shakes on that one, but comprehensive plan coming next year to a theater near you. Yes. Okay. Everybody's on board with that. And then there were a couple of other things, um. So in that comprehensive plan, I, I think understanding where people feel that ADUs might be appropriate in the community. Where people feel that housing would, is, is appropriate in the community. And I think those are comprehensive plan topics that I saw. Um, I brought up minimum wage. I didn't hear anyone disagree. So I'll just take that as consensus. Just kidding. Just kidding. So, um, I just wonder maybe through the work planning process, that would be an appropriate topic to bring back up because again, that's another big topic and we have a lot of big topics on our agenda. But, um, if that's okay, I always put together a list of items folks bring up as potential work planning topics. And then of course we rank them in January. So do folks think that's okay to just put that on that list of potential work planning topics to discuss? That seems okay to folks. Okay. So that's where I'll couch that. Um, I'm just trying to look up other things that people brought up. Housing study, Fahey, council partnerships. Um, and so I don't know if I said this already in my summary, but just, and that we would give Councilmember Brown, some latitude and direction to go forward to the consortium of cities and see, you know, how we can expedite that county tax and find out more information on what the county would plan to use that tax money on, because we don't just want to tax and then not get the outcomes that we're looking for. So trying to understand how they would spend that money to address the, the 15%. So does that sound like a good summary of what people said in general? Councilmember Fahey?
Uh, the only thing I didn't hear in your summary was, uh, the idea of increasing the number of unrelated persons that can live in a unit.
Thank you. And so do you want to add that as a work plan topic separate or do that through the comprehensive plan process? What would be the best?
Whichever one would come first.
Okay. So not strong feelings, but making sure that we look at that as part of the, and it looks like Director Zakaro has some framing or feedback for us. Director Zakaro?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, and thanks for summarizing. I think that was really helpful about the study and all of that to help give staff direction. But I have a question about incentives for inclusionary. So we did talk, um, you know, in the staff report and Lisa's presentation, we had some questions about whether council wanted to consider, you know, making some changes to the inclusionary housing ordinance to perhaps provide some incentives at this time. So I just wanted to get clarification if that's something you wanted us to work on or discuss at a later date through consideration of future work plans or comprehensive plan, or if you wanted to try to do that sooner.
Thanks, Director Zakaro. I think we'll probably get different opinions from council members. So everybody please weigh in. My, my perspective is it's really closely tied to the comprehensive plan. So like, if people, um, feel that we should rezone properties, I mean, that seems like an obvious place where we can have additional regulations around adding in additional units, because if we were to rezone commercial properties as residential, it provides a, in my opinion, an observation of property values that it would provide a great deal of additional value to the property owner. So if we were to give that entitlement, which grants a lot of additional value, I wouldn't feel particularly harsh about adding additional units in that situation, because it does create this additional value in the market that we're in. So if that's the way what we're, we're going, then I would want to use that as a strategy. But if what we're doing is keeping our existing zoning, then I think we would have to use different tools to accomplish it. So I just, in my opinion, it's very closely tied with the comprehensive plan, what set of tools we would want to apply. And it just, just depends what the community feedback is on how we should, um, be a community going into the future. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Well, I, I agree with you. I mean, one of the things I mentioned was land use and, you know, I even, you know, ventured out into a few areas that we would need to consider doing that. That's the only way we're going to really make significant inroads, in my opinion. Uh, we can't do it little incrementally and, and I don't know how popular that's going to be when it becomes to the court of public opinion, but you know, I think that we need to put it out there and, um, you know, the, the area along 36 is a potential TOD area. Yeah, it's one of those things that we should be talking about. If we're serious about affordable housing, here's an opportunity that I think is right because of the transportation and the availability of space. So I'm with you on that. Thank you.
Any other feedback to Director Zakaro and the question he put out to the group? All right. So I think the comprehensive plan is, I, I think we all see the value in comprehensive planning and that, you know, that's really a tool that we can use to understand the answers to some of these questions better. But it seems like we'll have to have special attention paid to housing and housing strategy in that process. So I think when we bid the work on that, maybe we include that information in the RFP to make sure that the, um, consultants that bid on that, if we are bidding that out, understand that, that we want some attention and data and understanding around that. Any other discussion on this topic? All right. Thank you, everybody. Very good. Um, so, um, we'll, more to come in the future. And so the next topic for tonight is discussion direction on amendment to the single use bag tax ordinance.
Could we have a break?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry about that. It's eight, eight twenty. And so, um, you can always, um, and I encourage all council members, anytime that somebody needs a break, you can make a point of order without getting called on, or you can raise your hand and say, could we take a break? So sorry about that. But we, it's eight twenty and we will take a five minute break and we'll be back at eight twenty.
Could we have a 10 minute break?
It's eight twenty.
I have to feed the cats and, you know.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll be back at eight thirty. It's eight twenty now.
Um, Mayor Proton Maloney, are you going fishing at the frying pan this weekend? Oh, I think you're muted.
No, not this weekend, but I have a trip coming up. Yes.
Nice. We, um, my partner and I went fishing there this past weekend and the Mayfly Hatch was very, very good to us.
The PMDs or the green drakes?
Um, green drakes.
Cool.
Yeah, they did great.
Yeah.
Lots of good sized browns.
I didn't know you flyfished.
I do, yeah. I mean, more often than not, I'm just casting, but sometimes I do catch fish. I'm not particularly prolific, but.
It's, it's called fishing, not catching.
Exactly, exactly.
I, so have you been up there before?
We did. We went up last February as well.
February?
Yeah, it was, it was chilly, but it was actually very good.
Yeah, well, the, um, so you were there at a good time for getting green drakes and the next, say, three weeks will be very good for green drakes.
Good to know.
That's, and people fly all over the world to go there to fish for green drakes.
That, the, the, that gold, gold medal water.
Absolutely. No, in fact, I'm tying as we speak. Well, not right now, but, you know.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Katie Baum, Sustainability Coordinator, and today we'll be talking about the disposal bag tax.
I'm back, sorry. My light is dark, sorry.
No problem. There's a setting in video in the new version of Zim where you can say adjust for dark lighting and it seems to work pretty well. So I don't know if you've found that or not.
I have not, but I have found the setting in my house, which involves turning the lights on, so.
Yeah, no problem. All right, so we're all back and we'll get going again. So we are currently on the next agenda item, which is discussion direction on amendment to single use bag tax ordinance. And so I'll turn it over to Megan Davis for our presentation.
Hello again, Mayor and Councils. So I'm going to turn this over to Katie Baum, who's our Sustainability Coordinator, and she's going to go through the details on this. I do just want to note that there was a an addendum to the packet, which includes some, just a correction in the packet that reflects updated language in the city ordinance, and you should be able to see that in the attachment. It's noted, so. Just wanted to reference that.
Thank you.
Katie, take it away.
Pull it up. All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yes, thank you, Katie.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Katie Baum, Sustainability Coordinator, and today we'll be talking about the disposal bag tax. All right, so in July twenty twenty one, Governor Polis signed House Bill twenty one eleven sixty two, the Plastic Pollution Reduction Act into law. As a very quick synopsis of what House Bill twenty one eleven sixty two does, ultimately, it phases out single-use plastic bags used by corporate or franchise stores. And then it places a fee on paper bags and banning Styrofoam to-go containers, and it also removes the local preemption on plastic materials. You know, you know, back in in April and then May, when we came before council before, we were unsure what the bill was ultimately going to look like and how it was really going to coordinate with our bag tax. And so as a very quick timeline of how these work together, January first, twenty twenty two, rapidly approaching, our bag tax is set to go into effect with a twenty-five cent tax on both plastic and paper bags. The following year, the state fee goes into effect for, and in quotation, stores on plastic and paper bags. Why stores is highlighted is because there is some distinguishing language within their definition that kind of differentiates between stores and then also small stores in which our bag tax does not. On January first, twenty twenty four, so again, the following year, a store shall not provide single-use plastic carryout bags unless from existing inventory. And I do want to note that that does not include restaurants, and it does not include small stores. And so there are these exemptions, so we will only see that phase out of single-use plastic carryout bags on stores that have three or more locations within Colorado that are corporate or franchised. And and that, yeah, sorry, and corporate and franchised. And then that June first rolls around is when even, you know, essentially it's saying your existing inventory should basically be used up by June first, twenty twenty four, and no store shall provide single-use plastic carryout bags. Again, there's that exemption on retail food establishments, specifically restaurants, and then that small store's exemption. So a quick breakdown of the differences that we do have. Lewisville bag tax encompasses all Lewisville retailers, and that it exempts farmers markets and temporary vendors. And those are really the only exemptions we see. House Bill twenty one eleven sixty two, it affects all, quote, stores, which is a grocery, convenience, liquor, dry cleaning, clothing, et cetera, that is not a small store. It also does affect farmers market and temporary vendors with that ten cent fee. It exempts, quote, small stores, which is a store that operates slowly or solely in Colorado, three or fewer locations and not part of a franchise or corporation, which effectively is the majority of businesses we see here in Lewisville that would be captured. So within, you know, when staff was working to kind of compile some some coordination on how these can really work in coordination with each other while staying to the true intent of the voter-approved tax, we were, staff recommends a remittance amended to quarterly. The state House Bill or state bill has remittance, has remittance being sent back to the city on a quarterly basis. Currently, within our ordinance language, we allow businesses to send their remittance in whenever they're, you know, remitting their sales tax essentially. And so we would recommend that quarterly remittance and changing the language to encompass that. Additionally, you know, we, there's there's this kind of interesting predicament between the stores and the small store definitions that the state lays out and those exemptions there within. And so in order to, again, stay true to that twenty-five cent tax, we are recommending a credit, and I want to clarify, this is not a rebate. We tried to think of a couple different words that would encompass what we're trying to do here, and credit was really the best we came up with. However, we understand that might be a little misleading. So the credit would be given to retailers starting January first, twenty twenty three. So again, we would have that full year of twenty-five cents that are captured under the definition of stores in order to maintain twenty-five cent collection across all Lewisville retailers. If we did not do that, if we did not provide this upfront credit saying that stores only have to collect fifteen cent tax, however, a state fee of ten cents for a total of twenty-five cents, stores would effectively have to collect thirty-five cents, which is a little bit of a logistical difficulty, having small stores collecting twenty-five cents under our tax and then with the state fee and then also our tax, larger stores collecting thirty-five cents. For residents, you know, to maintain that consistency across businesses and for residents, that's why the credit was kind of brought, how that kind of came about. It will still capture small stores, which is the majority of retailers within Lewisville that are captured by this, by our bag tax. And then the quarterly remittance actually makes collection and remittance easier for business owners. With the recommended amendments, franchise retailers with three or more Colorado locations will still collect and remit twenty-five cents starting January first, twenty twenty two. And they will continue to collect twenty-five cents on plastic and paper bags through the entirety. Small retailers with three or fewer locations in Colorado will still collect and remit twenty-five cents starting January first, twenty twenty two. Farmers markets would still be exempted. Farmers markets and temporary vendors would still be exempted from the Lewisville bag tax, and they would collect and remit ten cents starting January first, twenty twenty three, per House Bill twenty one eleven sixty two. So with that, staff is looking for some discussion and direction on the recommended option one. And then we have some additional questions that we would like to go over for some some direction from council. So ultimately, we're looking for some council direction around proceeding with the quote credit approach. Council direction around exempting small stores consistent with House Bill twenty one eleven sixty two, or maintaining the twenty-five cent tax on small stores as well. And then council direction regarding the continuation of exempting farmers markets and temporary vendors from the Lewisville tax, which ultimately maintains just the state fee of ten cents starting January first, twenty twenty three for those vendors. And with that, I'm also more than happy to take any questions. I know the credit language a little bit confusing, so I'm more than happy to answer any of those. I know we also have Deputy City Manager Megan Davis with us and also City Attorney Catherine Kelly, who can, we've been working on this for a while, so we definitely can answer any questions.
Thank you, please. So I'll turn it over to members of the public. If any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand at this time and let us know what you'd like to tell us. Seeing none, I'll turn it back over for council discussion. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I just wanted to add in a couple things for folks. So during the legislative session, I spent my night all after midnight testifying on this bill to try to make it include local governments that had a tax, similarly to how they included local governments that have fees in place. But there was a lot of concern from the legislators that that would make people think they were trying to pass a tax, even though it was clear that the language we proposed wasn't that. So they weren't, they didn't include that. But one thing we did get them to do was they had originally wanted cities to have implemented the bag collection fee by August of this year, so we'd be collecting it right now, which sounds really great, and I think community members would have loved it, but from a logistical standpoint, like, I just don't see how every city in Colorado could have done that and gotten system set up and all those things in place. So it just didn't work. So they did delay the start date for the fee because of feedback like from communities that we just didn't have time to implement the system. So because it was such a rushed bill with input only after midnight in the middle of the night, I would not be surprised if there's not additional cleanup language in the next year from legislators. So I would propose that if we have a path that makes more sense, that we could try to get one of our legislators to run cleanup language on this bill next year. And I think cleanup language is often much less controversial than the original language, so people wouldn't be so concerned about including cities that have a tax and things like that. So just wanted to offer that as a potential path forward, that, you know, there's another alternative that we actually have next legislative session to try to make some change in the state law to make things match up a little bit better and more administratively straightforward. And then if that's not successful, we could take up some additional things in the fall of next year. So I just want to offer that as a solution. And then additionally, I just wanted to say, I clarified a couple things, because when I was reading the packet, my recollection was slightly different than some of the things in the packet. So I did clarify with the city clerk that even though in the table in the packet, it lists that the tax can be spent on general city revenues, that we did exclude that from the ballot language. So it is not for general city purposes, it's for bag administration and for sustainability programs only. So I just wanted the record to reflect that that's just an error in the report and that we actually changed that when it went to the voters. So my proposal for tonight would be that we remove the exemption for farmers markets to make that consistent with the state. I think people who shop at farmers markets, often, not always, and I don't, you know, it's bad to categorize people together, but oftentimes people who shop at farmers markets are concerned about things like single-use bags. So I don't think removing the exemption on farmers markets is a significant additional burden. I think it would be received favorably by the patrons of the farmers markets. So I would propose we ask staff to bring back a measure that removes that exemption, and I have no issue with changing our remittance schedule to quarterly. So those two things seem great and like low-hanging fruit that we could go after. I do have a different perspective than the staff proposal on the credit. I think it is a rebate. I don't agree that it's a credit. And so what I look at it is you're taxing the smaller stores at a higher rate than you're taxing the larger stores. And I don't think that the smaller stores would find that fair. So you're saying to the smaller stores, you know, you guys have to collect the whole twenty-five cents, but the larger stores are getting rebated back ten of your twenty-five cents and only having to charge the state fee. So I actually do look at it different, like the state imposed its own fee, it's separate than our tax, and I think the proposal of having the smaller stores have to charge our whole tax and the larger ones only having to charge part of it is not equitable. So I'm not in favor of that, but it is also not a hill I'm willing to die on. So I just thought I'd put it out there and hope everyone will support it. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I would, you know, I think it's really important that we maintain as much of the original intent of our voters as possible. And and I also, and I think to that end, you know, the voters gave a clear mandate that they wanted to see twenty-five cents imposed, you know, uniformly across our businesses and that we not exempt small, small stores as the, as the the state would say, and that we would use that money for sustainability purposes, right? Now, the the state has come in with an additional fee, right, which will eventually become sort of a ban, if you will, when we talk a lot about bans, when we were, when we were talking about this ballot language. And and so I, I agree that like, I would like to see our, sort of our twenty-five cents as sort of the floor, and then, you know, where it applies, the 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 state fee is coming on top of it, because honestly, the state fee is for something, is for different purposes, right? Like the where, the way, way that we can use it and where it goes to, you know, is sort of separate from our sustainability fee. So I, I think I'd be in favor of of, you know, having twenty-five cents at some of our stores, thirty-five cents other places, because I think that's consistent with the intent of our voters and also with the, you know, sort of the intent of the state legislature.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks. Yeah, I agree that we should move to quarterly. I think that's just a administratively kind thing to do to make it simple. It's interesting. I, I think that I can probably get behind the farmers market. I had the same sort of thought, I think, as you had, Mayor, which is maybe kind of looking like, well, if the state didn't exempt it, you know, we exempt it, but now we can't avoid that they have to collect the tax at this point, right? So you know, it's maybe it's just simpler to, as long as you're collecting it, to have it be the same as everybody. I can go either way on that. So if anyone else feels strongly, I am not wanting to be the deciding vote there as far as which direction that goes. And then as far as the amount, I do like the twenty-five cents for everybody. I think in my mind, you know, if the order was different, right, if the state had passed their thing first, we may not have done anything, right? I mean, it's, well, okay, this is in place, and we certainly don't need to spend the time and the bandwidth to do all of this work to change the number. The state did a lot of what we were wanting to do, and I don't regret our choices, because you never know what state's going to do, but so we did something with intention, and I think the state did something slightly different. And if there's a way for us to have what we put into place as a staff, a council, and then as voters, and have that kind of win the day, that makes perfect sense to me. So if what we said and what we voted on was anywhere I go is going to be twenty-five cents, great, let's do it. And so if a retailer is supposed to collect an additional ten cents, they they need not. They can just collect the twenty-five that we planned on collecting, and this was never a money-making dream for us. So we, you know, it's giving ten of the fifteen cents we're supposed to be getting to the state, and we only get five, the retailer gets ten, the state gets ten. Okay, like this wasn't about us making money off of bags, it's about people not using bags. So I don't need, you know, I was a proponent for the highest bag tax possible, but that doesn't mean I'm a proponent for getting to thirty-five when it sort of then confuses things, that this place is thirty-five, this place is twenty-five, and we collect, you know, different things. I, the simpler for the restaurants and grocery stores, the better. And again, what we're trying to do is change people's behavior, not complicate the system. And so I, I think having it be as simple as possible and maybe including the farmers markets that is twenty-five cents everywhere. And like you said, we're going to make the most progress in grocery stores. is 25 cents everywhere. And like you said, we're going to make the most progress in grocery stores. But we're sending a message that says this is bad everywhere. So even if you're small and you don't use a lot of them, still stop doing that. And of course, the plastic ban will do that eventually. But I think this helps it start in 2022 and be consistent throughout until the ban. And it's almost like the state one doesn't exist. So, so I guess I'm leaning more towards the farmers market, adding that, because again, it's like the state one doesn't exist. It's just 25 cents everywhere regardless. So those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. And just, I, I think you knew this, but just one clarification that the city is keeping up. So the state doesn't actually, in the state law that's passed, the state doesn't actually get anything. They are telling to do it. So the money comes to the city in any case. Just clarify.
Okay, I was confused about that. So I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am also in favor of doing the remittance quarterly in alignment with the state and also with eliminating the exemption for farmers markets. I'm wondering about eliminating the exemption for temporary vendors as well to just make it, as Counselor Dickinson just said, just universal 25 cents, whatever. I'm not sure that we should make any decisions tonight about how we deal with the state's fee, because that's not happening yet, and we don't know how or when it's going to actually take effect. And so I'm, I'm in favor of just implementing our tax the way we got it through with the voters and, and with just these two changes on the timing of remittance and eliminating the exemptions.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahy. And I just have one question for you to clarify on the temporary vendors, just where you're falling. So I think without, maybe you've given a lot of thought to this, and, but, so I think a lot of the temporary vendors might be small businesses in the state rule. So a lot of them won't be normally set up to collect a bag fee. And so I don't necessarily know about the training and the implementation on the temporary vendor. So like if.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Whereas like the farmers market is like a discreet thing that we can, it's easy, like it's one specific thing. So I just don't know on the temporary vendor. So maybe we would give direction to learn more about that for when this comes back to us.
That would be good. But I, I just want it to be aligned with whatever the state is going to require. If they're going to require it from temporary vendors, then we should also. And if they're not, then we can't.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. Mayor Proton Maloney.
I think two of you said you're not going to die on any swords, so I don't plan to either. But, but I will point out that, you know, this is something that when I got on council six years ago, Council Lipton was talking about, you know, in his travels around the world. I mean, lots of places in, in Europe, they don't have plastic bags. And so, you know, this is something that we waited a long time for the state to act, and the state didn't act. And so I was one of those that supported Lewisville acting. You know, if, if we had reversed the, the actions, if the state would have been a year or two ahead of us, we would have accepted whatever that was, because the, the goal is to reduce or eliminate the use of plastic bags. And that's where the state is going. And as Counselor Dickinson said, you know, it is the grocery stores. It is those larger retailers that are driving most of the plastic bags. So I do like the fact that the state has acted. I, I, and, and, you know, on one hand, I'd like to go with that. On the other hand, there's aspects of what we created that I believe has some merit. I wonder if those small stores around town will change over time without this, you know, incentive, disincentive, what are you going to call it, to, to, you know, charge a tax for plastic bags. But, you know, we acted with intention, with the, with the, what I call nuisance fee, whatever it turned out to be, it's still a nuisance fee. So I, I'm not really locked into our definition as much. And if we just follow what the state did, I would be okay with that. If people feel strongly, though, that there's aspects of ours that are really important, I'm not going to die on the sword, as I said earlier, but, you know, whatever we would have, however we would have cast this on a ballot, it would have passed. If we would have done it exactly the way the state did it, it would have passed. If we would have done it the way we did it, it would have passed. I don't think the vote would have been much different, because the people of Lewisville feel very strongly about, you know, eliminating or greatly reducing the use of plastic bags. So, you know, you know, the easy way would just be to follow what the state did. And, you know, it gets us most of the way there. I mean, the fact that there's a ban at a certain point. I'm not sure why they exempted small stores. Why is the small store different? I'm not really sure. But I think over time, even the small stores will acquiesce to that as well. That would be my thought. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Proton Maloney. So I'll summarize a potential path forward, and it's not what anybody said. It's just kind of, I think, a compromise. It might be what Councilmember Dickinson said he was okay with. But so just given that, you know, we can act now, because we're going to be implementing something in January. It seemed like there was consensus around that. And so we all have the same value proposition as in regard to reducing waste and all of those things. There was a lot of alignment there. So we'll start something in January, and we want whatever gets put in place in January to be lasting, right, and, and continue on. So that's where this proposal is born from in listening to everybody. So it sounds like there's consensus around quarterly remittance, removing the farmers market exemption, keeping it 25 cents everywhere. And then, no one said this, but this would make me come on board with the 25 cents everywhere. If we give direction to staff that we would pay for the administration of it out of the fee first. So recognizing that there's going to be a bit of an accounting headache on our side, and the staff identified that in the report, that the fee will be kept separate from the tax so that we can, we can show that it was used for the purposes that it was supposed to be used for. And as long as we pay for administration out of the fee first, that gives, I feel like that keeps true to our tax better, what we try to do. So are people okay with that direction forward? Quarterly remittance, remove farmers market exemption, 25 cents everywhere, and just that staff will pay for administration of the fee, out of the fee first. Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I just wanted to just mention, where does that leave us with respect to trying to do any kind of corrective measure with the local legislators? Seems like that, that's, that's not something that's, well, it is something the standing staff might, and we might work with one of our local legislators, try to get that fixed.
I am happy to talk to Sonia and Tracy and just see, just to float like their appetite on on doing something for us around this, or to see if there's somebody already thinking about doing some cleanup around this. And then when we talk about this again, I'm happy to report back on what I hear. Does that sound like an okay first step from folks? Okay. And I saw Katie's hand go up.
That was, that was also my question. I was just wondering, yeah, I was, I was just trying to verify, you know, if, if what was being, you know, what was going on on the state level, if we wanted to wait for that. But it sounds like no, and then move forward with this 25 cent everywhere, you know, maybe it changes.
Yeah, I think if there is action at the state level, like we always have next fall, you know, anytime after they're done to address it before the new state stuff goes into place. So, and I think if they do nothing, then this still sets us up, so we don't have to do anything more. So does everybody feel good? Everyone's happy? Lots of head nods, lots of excitement? All right. And I'll just turn over to Megan Davis. Did we answer all the questions that were on the slide for us to answer?
You did. Yes, thank you. So in terms of process, just to be clear, so we'll be bringing back the necessary ordinance changes for you all to consider that would capture those four areas. Well, it would really be those three areas. Yeah, I think the administrative, paying for the administration out of the fee first. We'll discuss what that would look like and, and see if we can even kind of get some numbers around what that might look like. And we'll share any information we can about administering that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great. Good work, everybody. And so with that, we are adjourned. See you next week.